The regular meeting of the Township of Belleville zoning board of adjustment for September 5th, 2019 will now come to order. Clerk, hold the law.
Bennett, here. Caruso.
Here.
Giudano.
Here.
Lopez. Loza. Catalino.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Palado.
Yeah.
Delgertia.
Here. Everyone please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Notice of this meeting been given according to the sunshine law?
The certification of the meeting has been advertised according to the sunshine law.
Okay. Anybody looking at the minutes? Is there anything you want to resolve on the minutes or change?
I'm actually going to look at the minutes.
Okay. Will you give a second?
Yeah.
Oh. Mr. Valano makes a motion, Mr. Caruso makes second. Clerk, hold the law.
Bennett.
Yes.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giudano.
Yes.
Lo. Catalino.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Palado.
Yes.
Delgertia.
Yes. I have a question of our attorney. Are we going to need minutes for the special reading on the 20th prepared or not?
It would.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's.
All right, just wanted to add.
I'll have great reading next meeting.
Yeah, no problem. I just want to make sure that it's overlooked, that's all. Applications for adjournment. Do we have attorneys for all three cases? I understand we have one for Riverside Gardens. We have one for Castle Apartments. Do we have anybody for 162 West?
Yes.
You're the attorney?
Yes, sir.
I want to make you aware ahead of time that I believe you need five out of seven votes and we only have six people that can participate in your case tonight. So if you want to adjourn into the next meeting, I have no problem, but I want to not tie you up here.
Thank you. If you would give me an opportunity to discuss that with my client when they were.
Yes, go ahead.
There's seven members, but one's not be eligible to vote on that.
Because they didn't participate in the first part of the case.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Juan.
A little housekeeping before we get started. Regarding our receipt of the documentation, we had talked several months ago about going electronic. Where do we stand on that?
I think we should discuss that after the meeting at the end, not now, because we have cases to be heard.
Okay, so have we moved on at all?
I don't know, but we'll find out later on.
Okay.
Okay. First case on the agenda is ZB 2000. Well, I'm going to ask you what you want to do first, because since we started your case, we'll finish it first. I always give the people that we start first the chance. Decide what you want to do.
I appreciate that and my client has not walked in just yet. I apologize for that.
Oh.
But I have to get his consent or.
Well, I was giving you that courtesy.
I do appreciate that.
You're welcome. Okay, then we'll participate in the next case, which is the first case on the agenda. ZB 2019-05, 417, 457, Main Street, Riverside Gardens. Applicant is seeking an approval for their 44 units to be adjusted to 47 units for September 5th. Yes, sir.
Jane, we got K I notice? Notice in the publication?
All documents, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Why don't I swear? Is Frank here?
I'm here.
Okay. Frank Viewton, could raise your right hand as a zoning officer and engineer planner. With regard to all the applications tonight, do you swear that any comments you may make shall be the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's James Delia. I'm a partner in the walking of Wells Juorstian Leavenham Paramus. We're here tonight on behalf of Riverside Gardens. By way of background, this is continuing apartment building with, operating with 47 units. At some point, we received notice of violation that was actually approved for 44 units back in the 70s by Mr. Gauvel. We had, at that time, we did our due diligence to find out what was done back in the 80s because we didn't own the property. And all we could find on record was the Board of Adjustment card from April 75 and then a building department card from the following year, 1976. Riverside acquired this property in the mid 80s. Unbeknownst to them at the time, it was approved for 44, but they haven't continued to have operated it as a 47 unit apartment. At that point, we did more due diligence and did confirm that there's nothing that we could find, no resolutions of approval, no site plans on record. Mr. Ostakorn, our engineer even went so far as to seek out the apparent architect of the plan and they had no records of that as well. So Mr. Ostakorn had to go literally to the drawing board, do the survey, prepare a site plan, which includes all the information as to the unit, the unit count, the unit layout and so forth. These are all single bed or studio units. Again, that's by way of background. So here we are, fast forward. Again, we did our due diligence, our research on this and we continue to provide registrations to rent leveling board. I know that's not proof in terms of pre-existing use, but I just want to point out we continue to operate as though that were the case. Rent leveling and New Jersey registrations. New Jersey registration dates back as far as the late 80s.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Now, this property, I believe, was built in 1976, am I correct?
Yes.
And from 1976, or when he was ordered in 80, what is this?
83. 83.
How many units did you buy it for?
Forty-seven units.
You bought it for 47 units?
Yes, sir.
Wow, that's very interesting.
As far, again, I, let me take.
Well, there's a part of this you left out.
Okay, let me hear.
Well, I'm going to tell you a very important part. And the very important part is it's been taxed for 44 units all this time.
I know that.
Oh, you left that out.
No, I didn't. I never get there yet.
Oh, you didn't get there yet.
On the negative side, we do, we have the tax, which is there and we looked at it and I have, I have a client here to talk about that. Yes, the bills were paid. We weren't looking at the unit count. We were looking at the tax bill.
It's on the tax.
I know it is. I know it is. It jumps off the page now, that's for sure. We don't deny that.
And you know, there was a bunch of revaluations. There was one in the following year in 77. I believe there was one in 2008 or '07. And then, and then I think there was one in the 90s too, I'm not sure. Frank, how many revaluations have we had?
Seventy-seven was one.
No, seventy-seven, I think '07 or '06.
'07, and then there was one in '13 or something?
No, just now, '07.
No, wasn't there another one that was adjusted?
No.
I remember it was adjusted after the 2008. Like five years later, it was adjusted.
Maybe it came to look at your house, Joe.
They lowered my assessment, I didn't follow the deal.
Kerry's correct. Kevin Esposito did a re-investment of all the property values during 2013, I recall.
Okay.
I do have Mr. Conway here, Jim Conway. He's a manager of the property.
Actually, that's what this says here. It says on the information I have updated on 3/22/13. Okay. And it still had 44 units.
Okay, I get it. I understand. We're not looking at, again, we were not looking at the unit count. It never really dawned on us as a violation.
But you collected that through a unit count?
Absolutely. We don't quarrel with that. I think what I'm trying to say here is we bought it that way, we'd use it that way. We didn't appreciate or understand the distinction between the three units, approved or not approved. Mr. Conway's here.
Do you have a copy of the resolution of the case?
No.
What, the Board of Adjustment approved it?
Negative. We did a note for request. Yes, Mr. DiLorenzo does not exist.
Okay.
That would have been very helpful for all of us.
Yes, it would, I'm sure.
And again, that was part of my due diligence for you to see if we could find it. Cannot find it.
Mr. Delia, one question. Since the approval on around 1975, do you know if there was any other subsequent board applications?
I do not.
Boosted the 44 or 47 or just?
I do not. We have no information. I'm going to presume no, but because the structure hasn't changed as far as we can tell. I know we haven't changed it. And again, as I said, I've got Mr. Conway here, Jim Conway. He's got 30 years' experience with the property. You can gauge his credibility. This is just something that was amiss, admittedly. So with that said, we're hoping we can demonstrate tonight that we can meet the standards and the criteria for the grant of the variance, for the density variance and the extra units. As part of the zoning review and zoning denial, there were some bulk variances that were picked up as variances. Again, we have nothing to back into in terms of an existing approval, but I think we can justify those conditions as well.
Some of those variances go away with the new ordinance.
If, yeah.
They're bulk variances, a little.
Yeah. If there has been ordinance changes that would affect the bulk variances, and I think this will come up in another application. Under the law, the applicant can obtain the benefit of of zone changes that help them. From what I understand, if there are bulk variances that are no longer in effect, that they're mooted, then we would not even consider it.
Yeah.
Do we know which ones are moot?
We don't at this point.
I have four that I see.
Okay.
I don't know if the planner saw anything else.
That's good, because we have six bulk variances, so we're down two.
Yeah, it looks like unless your planner has something else.
Okay. So that's about four witnesses for you, Mr. Ostakorn. Charles Ostakorn.
Let's do some cleaning work here.
Sure.
Frank, your report, okay? What C variances are not required in?
Well, it looks like to me the front yard.
Okay.
The side yard. Perimeter surface coverage, I believe. And I believe the minimum open space.
So the first four. Well, yeah, on the bottom, yeah. Parking, five feet off the property line is still required. And the parking stalls, ninety, well, ninety, what's the parking stalls that are required now?
Right now, that's a, there's no standards in that zone. They have an outline-free zone. And there's no standards for residential parking in another zone.
So this is not a residential zone, is what you're saying?
Right, it's a ZB 1, I believe.
And that doesn't allow residences at all?
No, right, doesn't allow residents, but that doesn't call out parking anywhere where you can put your finger on.
Exactly. Well, let me ask you, well, let me ask the applicant a question. Do we have the applicant here or somebody who testified for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Let's have the applicant sworn in first, because we want to get to the nitty-gritty.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So first four.
We're down the block.
And five feet off the property line.
That's required everywhere.
Was this the way you were going to proceed anyway, Mr. Delia?
I'm finding it going to Mr. Conway first.
Okay, could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name?
James Conway, C O N W A Y.
Thank you.
So I don't know what you wanted to ask first, because I am out of order here.
Want to tell us who he is?
Okay.
How is it associated with the property?
How do you know all this? So first of all, Mr. Conway, by whom are you employed?
Gabriel Realty is my employer.
And as part of your employment with Gabriel, what are your responsibilities?
One of the responsibilities is management of Riverside Gardens.
And do you oversee management of other properties in other locations?
Yes.
Approximately how many?
Approximately 400 units.
So, and we have 44 approved here, 47 here, correct?
Correct.
Now, you've heard my opening remarks, you've heard my dialogue with the chairman and with the board. If you could, in your own words, first of all, tell us how long you've been involved with the management or how long have you managed this building?
I've been involved with this building for over 30 years. We took it over in the late 80s.
And can you tell us, have you changed the unit count at any time during that period?
No, when we took it over, it had 47 units. Forty-four, one bedroom and three studios.
And in my opening remarks, you've already talked about the dialogue. We had about two items, well, three items really, the DCA certificates, right?
Yes.
As well as the rent leveling registrations?
Correct.
As well as the tax assessments?
Correct.
And the chairman's concerned, and I think, you know, we do need to reconcile in front of the board how we can have a discrepancy between what we filed with the DCA and with the rent leveling board as opposed to having the knowledge of the assessment.
Let's deal with the DCA and the rent leveling. They're both, we, those are business reports that are generated, one for the city of Belleville, one for the state of New Jersey. In all cases, we've always shown 47 units on all reports that we've ever generated for the complex. As to the taxes, our concentration is getting the money together and paying the bills in a timely fashion. Frankly, I don't know if I, I think once a year, we would get a statement from the town which shows the assessed value on it. We get that card annually. It would go into a file, frankly, that no one would look at it unless it changed as far as the assessed value changed, like if they did a reassessment or something of that nature. But it's not something that is looked at or studied. What is studied is how much is due and when is due and are we making sure we're getting it there on time? And that's what we did.
And during that period, did you look at these tax bills, if you recall?
Only to, only to make sure they got paid.
And then, when did it finally come to your attention that there was in fact an assessment for the 44 units?
When I found out that there was not an approval for 47 units, but rather that we approved for 44 units.
That's all the questions I have for this gentleman at this time.
You'll do it first, Frank.
I want to step back a little bit. Is he a principal?
I am not. I just manage the company.
So when you ask, is he the applicant or?
Applicant's representative. You are manager of this building, is that correct? Yeah, I'm not a principal.
Not a principal, okay. So we alluded to that you look at the bills, I mean, the tax bills, right? And the only time you look at them is if they got reassessed.
Correct.
Right? I think we established, we did get reassessed several times. Did you look at it then?
We would see what the new assessment would be. I did not ever look at it to see how many units we were ever assessed or approved for.
So you won't look at it when you have reassessed it?
Not for that particular bit of information, no, sir.
But you would look at it when you would be calling it to the zoning board or, I mean, the state, the DCA, you would look at it when you.
We'd look at how many units, when these, this is when the state comes every five years to do a clean, give you a clean card. They inspect all 47 units. They want us to list who the tenants are for all 47.
They never look at the tax bill for how many units?
No, no.
That's all I had.
Okay. Now, I have a question. How many levels is this?
It's two and a half.
What do you mean, two and a half?
When you come in, the front door at, let's say, 2 Davidson Street, there are five entrance ways. You go down a half flight. You can go up. There's some right on, as you come in, there's a door also, an apartment right there.
What do you mean, you go down a half?
When you come up, when you're coming into Davidson Street.
Go ahead, I'm looking at the plans, it's what?
You go up, you go up a level, look, six, five, six steps to get into the door.
Go ahead.
You're in the, you're at a landing.
Right.
You either go down a few steps or you can go up a few steps.
Split level house, something like.
All right, let me make, you have a copy of the plans? I have it right up on the board, on the easel.
Okay, go look at the plans. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. All right, and then you tell me what we're talking about.
Counselor, are these plans the exact same as we?
Yes, they are.
Okay, no need to mark.
And well, maybe we can get some guidance from Mr. Ostakorn.
Do you have a principal owner here of the corporation?
Principal owner, no, I do not. I have the manager.
Only the manager?
Yes, sir.
And this is the manager?
This is the manager.
And you rent the apartments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's go to Davidson Street. Okay, Davidson Street, there's an apartment there. And I don't know what Circle 4 means, but it says unit number six. Am I seeing that right?
There are five entryways into the building.
The one to the left, please, on plan. If you need help from the architect, I have no problem.
Yes, so let's get Mr. Ostakorn's warnings.
Yes, get it sworn in too. The more the merrier.
Mr. Ostakorn, if you could raise your right hand. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name?
Charles Ostakorn, O S T E R K O R N.
Would you qualify Mr. Ostakorn just so?
Yes, go ahead.
You handle it, tell him.
What's his question?
I'm a licensed engineer, surveyor and planner, state of New Jersey.
Benefit of a training education experience in that field.
I went to, and New York College of Engineering, but when I graduated, it was NJIT. Then I went back to NJIT for a surveying degree. Took some geology courses at Montclair. So anyway, I have two degrees.
And how many times have you testified in the field of engineering?
Hundreds.
Over how many years?
Thirty, thirty-five years.
Isn't he an architect too?
Engineer.
Only engineer, so we don't have an architect.
No, so you're.
Who made these plans?
And I've appeared here before.
Oh, you made these plans?
Yes, I did.
An engineer, okay.
He's qualified, he's an engineer.
No problem. Now, let's go to what I asked. When you look at these plans?
Yes.
You have the vision.
On the top.
This is on the fourth page.
Yes.
So go to the right page so we can get to where I want. We're on sheet, um. I believe it's sheet 101.
It's the last page.
Yes, it's the last page, right.
Okay, now, on the top, to the left, there is unit number six.
Right.
Now, how do you get to unit, in unit number six, when you come into the building?
You go, I'm pretty sure you go up, up a few stairs.
Right.
And to get to the other unit, you go downstairs.
Which unit?
Unit five.
Unit five, you go downstairs?
Yes.
All right, let me ask you another question. So you're telling me unit five goes down, unit six goes up?
No, I'm sorry. All, I'm sorry. All these units, six, five, sixteen, fifteen, twenty-six, twenty-five, thirty-five and thirty-six, all the way across. Those are the lower units that are facing Davidson.
Okay.
And the windows are, you know, six inches above the grade.
So would you say that they're like basement apart?
Yeah, they're, and it's like half in, half in, half out.
Let me ask you another question.
Yes.
No, let me get this out of the way. These studios to the left.
Yeah, yes.
What are these studios? How do you get to them?
They have separate entrances from the outside. The, these studios has got a separate entrance. C you get to from an inside coming in the rear from the parking lot area.
Okay.
Jace to the garage.
Now, now, let's go to these units that you mentioned before. Six, five, sixteen, fifteen, all those great, those nice numbers.
Right.
What is the layout in there?
They're all one-bedroom units.
One bedroom? What else is in there? We have no plans here, that's why I'm asking.
There's a kitchen. There's an eating area. There's a dining room area, it's a living room, dining room type area. And then a one-bedroom and bathroom.
So the only, let's say, the only separate rooms that are enclosed is the one-bedroom.
And the bathroom.
And the bathroom. Everything else is out the open, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, on each other floor, is the layout the same way?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? What is this in circles, four, six, eight, 10? What does that mean?
There, for postal purposes, more than anything else, but there are five separate entrances from Davidson Street, stoops that go into five different doorways.
Okay, so that explains why they're on the next two floors. Am I correct?
That's correct.
They call them building numbers.
There's also rear entrances from the parking area that go into five of those as well.
So, okay, so now, apparently, what is in this studios?
They're open, they're literally open spaces with a separate bathroom.
So it's a space for the bathroom?
That would be accurate.
Kitchen?
Kitchenette-like area with a stove, refrigerator.
My question is, what are the ones that were added on? Can somebody show us?
Where they ran on?
The three that are, the three that are at issue are the called Studio A, B and C. That would be the southernmost part of the building.
They're ground level, I believe.
They are ground level.
Right, no step down?
There are no step down, they're walkway.
That's the ground level, okay. Those were the proveratthalities, right?
Apparently.
I don't know if they were.
I think that's what they're approved for, if you look at the original plan.
Again, if you're right, if you look at the underlying approval card, that's attached to the application materials. If you just give me a second to pull it up, I can add some, shed some light on this. So we have a Board of Adjustment card that's part of your package. It says 44-unit apartment, 24 DI garage and 57 open-air parking spaces. And.
How many garages you have now?
There was, um.
Showing 24.
Twenty-four garage spaces. It shows up on the Town Hall Building Department from '75, April 75.
And they have 22?
Twenty-two. If I could, can I say something?
Yeah.
I think, I think what happened originally, and I'm, again, I have no idea, I don't know.
I'm willing.
I mean, we have a laundry room here in the corner. And then we had these open spaces here, which may have been the workshop and other, you know, utility area. And at some point, many years ago, they got converted to studios. And right now, in this, behind unit 15 on the lower level, we have the boiler room, the main boiler room, which is in the center of the building. And there's a workshop area. There's two garage doors on there, but they're not garages. I think, I think there's two. There's a workshop and a boiler room. All the rest are garages.
So, the heating system for the new, new studios, same system as, yeah, there's...
There's only one heating system for the lower apartment, right?
Uh, electrical, and separate panel.
We, the owners pay the electric, because...
Only apartments pay electric?
The owners pay the electric for all the apartments.
Only apartments?
All the apartments.
So there's no utility bills for the tenants at all?
Correct.
And the total apartment spaces is what now, ninety-four?
Sorry?
How many apartment spaces in total now, ninety-four that I read?
How many do we have?
I think there are eighty total.
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one?
Eighty-one?
Eighty-one spaces.
Eighty-one.
Eighty, one garage, it's a workshop.
Eighty, that's what we have on our notice, eighty.
Eighty?
Says here, nineteen-seventy-five, there's only board of adjustment, number three-twenty-seven, through forty-four units, with twenty-four garages and fifty-seven open-spaced parking spaces. Open air is fine.
So, I'm, I'm trying to, doing the math on my head.
That's eighty-one.
There was eighty-one back then?
Same.
Now, how many do you have now?
It says eighty.
Eighty. You only lost one apartment, now?
I have twenty-two garages and fifty-nine parking spaces.
Oh, so they lost two garages, and they got...
Not two garages. Forty-four units, twenty-four garage, and fifty-seven open spaces. If I could say, those two extra garages, I think were, where I have numbered, ten here is like the workshop, and I think there was one on the other side. There's a chimney here, so there's probably only two here. So that gives us the twenty-fourth. That they originally had.
Again, did we make any of these changes to the parking lot?
No.
No.
Nor, nor we changed any, right? No, I'm just, I just want to, you know, we're, we're in the dark on what happened in the past, and so, and this is a good discussion on it, but there's some things we just can't fill in the blanks on, just about.
Out of curiosity, counsel, what does the present tax bill say?
Oh, it says the forty-four units, there's no question about it. As we did, as we did this, it jumped, like I said, it jumps off the page, we can't, we can't mark it.
Another, I, I may be frank in asking, but how did we get here? How did this come about?
Uh, we got hit, uh, noticed with the violation. Um, at that point, um, a different firm was, was going through a dialogue, and then, being that I had to range, I was consulted. Then it, it took us, uh, a bit of time to put the plan together.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Frankie?
Yes, Jeff.
How did this violation take place?
It came about, I believe, out of rentals, and I saw that the records weren't matched in how many units were there and how much...
You mean for CO?
The rental CO, yeah.
Good catch.
Okay. You have another question?
Yes.
Anybody else on the board has questions?
I do.
Mr.?
I do.
Just a show.
Of these three studio apartments, what is the approximate, uh, square area, the footage in each of these apartments? Apartment A in particular looks, looks extremely small.
You say A? A is the studio.
Yeah, A is a studio.
They're all studio, all three are a studio.
Don't guess, but you said the apartment.
A, A in particular, Studio A.
I have a, it's about two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. I actually got into studios and laundry, and I measured those areas back and the remaining area. I didn't actually get into Studio A, but in measuring the stairwells and what Studio B looked like, I went in there, it was the room, the kitchenette, and the bathroom. So that was the remaining.
As I brought this point out in previous years, it's, it's my understanding, and Mr. DiLorenzo can correct me if I'm wrong, if things have changed with the recent zoning changes, but I, I seem to recall that a few years back, the council passed an ordinance requiring a minimum amount of square footage in a domicile for it to, to be permissible. And I, I think the number was, you gotta have a minimum of four-hundred square feet per, per person. So if you've got an apartment with only two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, is that, is that a legal...
You're talking about a property maintenance code.
Yes.
You're talking about, that was, that was approved years ago. Um, and it goes by the size of the bedroom, how many you can have. So the, the guys would go out and measure the square footage of bedroom and see how many they would, uh, there's a form that you use to see how many they can have in their allowable occupants.
I, I seem to remember when Councilman Kennedy was here, he was the one that introduced the, the ordinance, and it was, uh, he, he said, the council approved it as well, that he set a minimum of four-hundred feet per, per person. And that was to stop what he, what the council was proceeding at this time as, as boarding houses. There were a number of structures in Belleville that were essentially being turned into flop houses, and that ordinance was passed to, to stop this from taking place.
If, if it was, I, I didn't see it, you know, I, I just have the one that we use, like I told you, to go by the bedroom, measure it.
I think it's, it's, we really should at some point try to find that ordinance, see if it's still in effect, because if I remember the numbers correctly, every legal structure in Belleville requires at the minimum of four-hundred square feet, regardless whether it's a bedroom, a kitchen area, a living room, you have to have at least four-hundred square feet for every hab, every inhabitant of that, that structure.
Yeah, I don't know, I'd ask Kelly.
So I'm just wondering if Apartment A is actually in violation of that, that ordinance.
If there is such an ordinance, we need to know.
Yes, I agree.
And what is the square area for the other, the other two apartments?
I just measured, and B and C is like four hundred square feet.
Well, just four, so it probably just qualifies as... And my other question, before Studio Apartment C came into existence, can you say that it was possible to enter the laundry room from inside the building? And now that because Studio Apartment C exists, it looks like, according to these plans, that the only way to gain entry to the laundry room is externally? So everyone has to go outside in order to, to get to the laundry room?
Yeah, that's correct, it's an external entry.
So without, without Studio Apartment C, residents of this complex would be able to get to the laundry room without ever having to go outdoors?
No, that would be incorrect.
No, that's correct.
There's no internal hallway connecting, for instance, any of the other entry, any of the other building entrances.
That's why we have the two, four, six, eight, ten.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But, but in this case, because of where it is, wouldn't all the tenants have to go around the building to get into the laundry?
They can either go out the front or the back and get to that area.
Front or the back?
Correct.
Oh, yes, because these always go all the way through.
That's correct.
Any other questions by members of the board?
I think we should let counsel put out the last of his guess.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll put one to the witnesses.
That's okay, I can go with the flow, this is, I, I appreciate this, this is actually, this, I like to go this way, I like to know what you have on your mind, and deal with it.
Is there additional witnesses you have?
I do, I, I, I want to finish up with Mr. Osterkorn, just briefly go over his, his site plan, this is part of his, his plan. And then I've got, I've got Joe Steiger on traffic and Paul Baumann on plan.
All right, why don't we do this? Why don't we finish his testimony, because he's already out? Before you get the next two, I want to ask the gentleman who has the third case how he wants to proceed, and then we'll continue with your case. No problem, just finish him off.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna make this brief. The, the cover sheet basically shows where the site is. We're on Main Street, Davidson, Terry Street, and Little Street is down to the north. We have residents across the street, residences between the parcel of Terry Street, uh, front on Davidson, and Main Street, and Route Twenty-One is to the, to the east. This is the existing survey that shows the garages, the existing parking layout, the entrances, aisle widths, uh, and everything else. It shows the access to the buildings from Davidson and Main Street, and that's sheet two of three. Sheet three of three is the site plan, which basically recites the variances, which I think we went over already, which is for, um, which is for impervious coverage, minimum open space, maximum density, and the rear yard setback. The rear yard here is seventeen feet, we addressed Davidson as the front, and they were all in pre-existing conditions.
And so what we've learned tonight is that the, the front yard setback has gone away, the side yard setback has gone away, impervious coverage, open space have gone away, correct?
And density, uh, and density.
Nope, density remains, density remains, parking remains.
Yeah, we don't have a front yard, it's just a rear yard.
Just a rear yard.
Oh, is it? You, you, we don't have that variance.
I had, I don't know, I had his twenty. What did I have his?
That was the old ordinance.
Oh, okay, I had his twenty-five, so we don't have that variance, it should be fifteen.
That's all I have for Mr. Osterkorn.
All right, does any members of the public have questions on the testimony of either of the witnesses? Anyone? None? Okay.
I have one, one, one follow-up question.
Go ahead.
I just want to go back to something, um, that was discussed earlier. Uh, Mr. DiLorenzo said that the parking situation for this complex was a little bit murky because it wa, it wasn't a residential zone, it was in a, 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 a V V.
Right, we can't put our thumb on it, Tommy too, but we're going by R S I S, which is, I believe, one-point-eight and roughly eighty-five.
I'm just trying to reconcile that with what we have on the very first page of the site plan, because according to this drawing, the, it says the project is in an RC zone.
Well, that's, yeah, but that, he's going by the old one, not the new one. The old, the old one's RC.
We filed when it was in the RC zone, we probably started the plan two years ago.
All right, thank you for clarifying that.
And the parking spaces are all generally nine-by-eighteen, which is generally acceptable.
All right, okay, thank you.
All right, I have a follow-up question of the management. The laundry room?
Yes, sir.
How big is the laundry room?
It appears to be...
It's not a large room.
I think it's about four hundred square feet, it's about the size of studio A, let me, let me double check.
Looks, it looks on the plan, was a little smaller.
It's a little smaller, right?
It looks smaller than this?
Yeah. All right, let me see, let me see.
It looks more like maybe two-fifty-three ton.
It appears to be the same size as Studio A, which we were told was about two-hundred...
It's slightly bigger than Studio A.
Yeah, it's a little smaller than Studio C. I have it about three-hundred-and-thirty square feet.
Okay, now, how many washers and dryers are there?
Approximately six of each.
Six of each. Okay, forty-four units.
Yes, sir.
Just one follow-up question. Any else have any follow-up questions? Yes?
I have a question. The garage ten that was stored into workshop, woodshop, whatever it was, that's not for commercial purposes, right? That's strictly for maintenance to the building?
That's correct, it's for our onsite work that we have to do, store.
The boiler was always there?
The boiler's been there, that's wrong.
Someone that was built?
I believe that's how it was built, yes.
So technically, that wasn't part of a garage at one time?
Doesn't appear to be that way.
Any other follow-up questions by members of the board? Any follow-up questions by members of the public? No, then we'll just hold off on this, and I will ask the gentleman who has, um, DeWitt, actual address, one-sixty DeWitt Avenue, what you want to do for tonight?
I'm applying, I'm just post-polic for the record, on behalf of the applicant, one-sixty-seven, one-sixty, I'm sorry, DeWitt Avenue, obviously, of course. So, the fact that you only have six and we're entitled to the seven is not necessarily the, um, the, um, a factor that we, that's motivating us right now. We, we have, I have a question.
Let me give you something that may motivate you. On your case, you need five out of seven.
Yes.
All right, I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
I'm completely aware, and I know that the case has been largely presented, I know that the witnesses testified, and I read the transcript, I know that, um, we've, we've, we've finished, and that there was some comment at the end that, that we would adjourn this in order to be able to comply with the wishes of this board. And those changes that have been made, those were submitted back in August, those plans were submitted, um, and the changes were made to, to the, um, to the site plan drawing with the parking, to the attic, to the property cards for the two-family homes showing those, as well as the calculation of the, um, the attic and the removal of the dormers for the attic. So I think we've complied with all of the wishes of this board as they were expressed at the, um, prior hearing.
So you still wish to proceed tonight?
We'd, we'd, we'd like to present that, because there's not much else that we can do in that regard.
I understand, I just wanted to give you the opportunity. All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll go back to continue this case first.
Counsel.
The case we're on right now. I'll see you all break. Okay. We'll have a recess, and we'll go back on the record at eight o'clock. Okay? The regular meeting of the Valvill's zoning board of adjustment for September fifth, two thousand and nineteen will now come back into order. We will now proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to call our next witness, his name is Joseph Steiger, expert in the field of traffic engineering.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, please, Mr. Steiger, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony or about the given truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
Joseph Steiger, S-T-A-I-G-A-R.
And you, you submitted a traffic impact study on this?
Correct.
Okay.
And, uh, please, uh, Mr. Steiger, give us the benefit of your background.
Yes, I have a Ph.D., Master of Science degree, civil engineering, New Jersey Institute of Technology, professional engineer, licensed in state and Jersey, other states, also professional planner, but on the other side, a traffic engineer, which I appear before this board in New Jersey.
Please qualify Mr. Steiger for a report.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And the report that's been submitted to the board that you, that you prepared is dated May thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, correct?
Correct.
Please, uh, give us, uh, background on what you did and what your findings are.
Yes. Well, we did a traffic study, we studied the intersection that's right there on Main Street and Terry Street, we took traffic counts between seven and nine a.m., four to six, four-thirty to six-thirty p.m. Those are typical peak hours of the roadway, and also the peak hours of residential development, just that we present to users, just get the magnitude of, of traffic, and then what the levels of service are at the intersection. We also took into account, we're, we are involved with a proposal for, um, a warehouse in Belleville, also on Main Street, and I know it's not an application yet, but, uh, we, we're, we're involved with it, but just to be conservative, we included that traffic onto, uh, onto the intersection, plus we, we took it out for two years. Uh, New Jersey DOT has, uh, growth rates for roadways such as Main Street, um, of two percent, uh, per year, so we took it out two years. So we have existing volumes of what we counted this year, we increased it by that other project, potential project, and then also four percent traffic increase, and ran the, ran the levels of service, and we get relatively good levels of service. We get overall level of service for all the separate approaches to that intersection of D, as in door. Levels of service range from A through F, A being a free-flow, F being where the volume exceeds the capacity. So we're in a relatively good range of, of level of service. We're not proposing any increase, obviously, um, to it, those three, uh, apartments that are in contention are already there, so there's no before and after, it was really just to determine what, how things are operating right now.
Since you brought in this site, where is this alleged future site?
To the north.
It's to the north?
Yeah.
How far to the north?
Kitty, it's the Kitty property.
Okay, all right, now we, now we know what we're talking about, okay.
And we just added that, just to be conservative, um, in our analysis. Uh, secondarily, what we did was we took parking counts, uh, to find out what kind of usage of a parking lot there is. As we know, people are, uh, parking at night, overnight, so we took the traffic, parking counts in the parking lot. Uh, we, we, we obviously could not see what's in each and every one of the garages, so we discounted those, um, whether they were vacant or not, we just assumed they're all filled. Uh, but on the exterior, we did those parking surveys from six p.m. to twelve midnight, and we did them on two days, one being a Thursday in April and a Tuesday in May, early, late, late April, early May. What we found was that at six o'clock when we started, we had a minimum of, between the two days, twenty-seven empty spaces, and by the time we got to midnight, fourteen empty spaces. So the eighty existing parking spaces currently are not, uh, overfilled in that sense. So the purpose of the, of those parking counts was to determine whether the, um, parking spaces can accommodate the existing forty-seven units. So with fourteen empty spaces, out of the eighty that are, that are there, there's sufficiency for that, uh, and that was basically it, just to make sure that, uh, traffic conditions are, are, are working in relatively good, uh, good, good manner, and then to find out whether, um, the parking can accommodate the, the forty-seven units that are there now.
No further questions?
Any questions by members of the board? Any questions by members of the public? I'll just wait.
Just, just one question, you, you mentioned earlier that, uh, in your study of future use, you included the potential warehouse that's planned for the Kitty property, and you said that according to your calculations and modeling, uh, things looked to be relatively well, but I just noticed in the table that appears on page five, the overall score, letter grade that you're giving for both the a.m. and p.m. rush hours is a letter grade of D.
D.
That...
That's what I said.
With A being great and F being abysmal, so, so D, D is not, is just barely flowing.
E, E is where you're at capacity, so D tells us that there is reserve capacity there. So again, we took, we took the worst-case scenario, we got D for both peak hours. You can see that there's one, uh, there's one E that east, oh, excuse me, the westbound, left turn is at E, but we're not going to, we're not adding to that movement, no one's going to go, uh, uh, westbound and make a left-hand turn and go south, they're going to go north.[1725.72] That's the only one that seems to be marginal, and we don't add to that.
And your modeling took into account that if this warehouse does come to fruition, there's going to be a lot of truck-trailer usage along Main Street. So your model took into account it's just not passenger vehicles. Your model includes truck-trailers as well?
Any other questions by members of the board? Any questions by members of the public, once again? None, we may call your next one.
Thank you, I'd like to call our planner, Mr. Paul Baumann. I don't know that we can keep him for five minutes, but we will try to be succinct.
Raise your right hand, please. With regards to this application, do you swear the testimony here about your service is true?
Yes.
State your name, say your last name, please.
Name is Paul Baumann. My last name is spelled B-A-U-M-A-N, and my business address is 5 Norwood Terrace in North Paul, Long Island, Jersey.
And you're being called as a licensed planner?
Yes, my license is the lack.
Yes, yes, he's been before as thousands of times.
Thank you, thank you. So, Mr. Baumann, you've been engaged by the applicant to provide the planning review and planning testimony in this case. You've met with all the witnesses in advance of the hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
You've reviewed the plans, is that correct?
Yes.
You've obviously been here for this hearing tonight, is that correct?
Yes, I've heard 99% of it. I just missed the portion of Mr. Stiger's report, but I know what his written report contains, and that's what I'm going to rely on, that he spoke according to that.
And what we've also learned tonight is that a number of the C variances have been eliminated.
Yes.
That said, if you would, please give us your overview in terms of whether we've satisfied positive and negative criteria to justify our existing condition here.
Yes, well, basically, we have two different types of C variances in this application. Most of them were, and there's one still, a C1-type variance, because it's an existing condition that's been there since the building has been created, and that's the lot depth. 100 feet's required, 50 feet's provided. The other variance is a C2 variance regarding parking spaces. Let's take care of the C1 variance, because there's really nothing the applicant can do to fix that. So by statute, Section 70(c)(1), says that a variance can be granted where the irregularity or shape or the location of an existing building or improvements on a lot justifies it. And that's what grounds we're asking for the C1 variance for the lot depth to be granted from. There's no vacant land that can be acquired to change that lot depth. So it is what it is, and that's all we can provide. The C2 variance for the parking requirements, I wasn't aware that the ordinance had changed, but regardless, if the new calculations are based on 1.8 per unit, and we have 47 units, we require 85 units, we can provide 80. So we're asking for a five-car variance. We believe that's justifiable based on what you heard testimony from Mr. Stiger and what's contained in his written report, that at minimum, there's always been, when he studied the premises, at least 14 vacancies at all times of the day during his study periods. So, given the fact that these are all one-bedroom or studio units, we believe that the board can grant that variance without there being a risk of causing an issue. And we believe that we satisfy both negative and the positive criteria for the granting of those variances. First, because there's a benefit to be accrued, where we've demonstrated that historically there's been no problems with the neighborhood with those deficiencies, even when they were greater under the former calculation of 94 spaces being required. Certainly, now that the ordinance has reduced that requirement down to 85, we certainly don't see that to be a problem to either the community or the residents of these apartments. And that would be the positives, the gain of the additional parking space variance allows us to still occupy the number of units that we're requesting approval for. The negatives is that we don't have a negative impact on the site or the neighborhood. So the big one is the D5 variance for the density. Now, you've heard all the contesting about how this became a 47-unit versus 44 approval. We can't justify the numbers based on the history that we can't create. So what we're looking to do is say, okay, board, the D5 variance is approvable for positive and negative criteria purposes. So, looking at it from that standpoint, all of these are one-bedroom units of studios. So the amount of cars, you don't get into two units, I mean, two cars per unit. So there's ample parking on site from a statistical standpoint, according to Mr. Stiger's testimony. The site is located along the bus route of several buses, and so that, in actuality, probably reduces the parking demand so that if there are vacancies on the site. It's within the short walking distance of food and convenience stores, which, you know, you have a Kmart within walking distance, and other retail and outlet stores within walking distance. That reduces the demand for parking on the site. Even with the additional three apartments, as I said, there's still significant quantity of vacant parking spaces at all times. And so we believe that the board can base that on the five criteria that we mentioned being positives. On the negative side, the density variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public's good, because the apartments have existed there for over 35 years with no documented detriment to the occupants in the building or the neighborhood. There's been no significant police activity on the site that we've been able to research. The density variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. When the Board of Adjustment back in '75 approved the variance for the density, I was not able to determine what the density that was permitted back then was. But it was a significant number of times, the multiple of what was permitted in that zone, I'm sure. Now, when we compare what's permitted there, we would see that there's still an excess of density from what is permitted in the zone. And again, I don't have the latest version of the zoning ordinance. I didn't know that it had changed, because this project has been going on for well over a year, trying to get to this point where we have this hearing. But you can say with confidence that the non-conformity has been accepted by that neighborhood. It's part of the fabric of that neighborhood, and the town has not experienced, I'm sure the board would have heard, something from its professionals if there were a continued series of complaints that this stuck out like a sore thumb. So we believe from that standpoint that it will not impair the intent of either your zoning ordinance or your master plan. So for those reasons, I believe we've satisfied positive and negative criteria for granting the D5 variance, because the site can accommodate the extra density. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions by members of the board?
Just one question slash comment. With the new zoning for multifamily units in either the RV or RC zone, I think the calculation now is that the number of parking spots is dependent upon the number of bedrooms. I think it's a one-to-one situation. If you have two bedrooms, you need two parking spots. Mr. DeLorenzo, correct me if I'm wrong about that. So if your building was coming before this board for the very first time with 47 one-bedroom apartments, if this was in an actual RV or RC zone, you would only need, if I understand the math correctly here, you would only need 47 parking spots, but you're providing 80 at this point. So you need to try to be, I'm always advocating to be fair, equitable, and treat everybody the same. So you, under this new zoning that we have, you would probably only need 47 spots, and you're providing 80 from this chart. So you're well above what the new zoning would actually require.
Well, when we filed the application, we were under the formal ordinance, and that's why criteria we're trying to justify to the year. If we're going to go under the old law, that's where we have to go under. Under the new law, this is not even allowed. Presidential is not allowed in this zone, if I remember correctly.
For the use.
Yeah. Okay, so if we're going under the old law, we have to go under the old rules.
I realize we have to abide by the old zoning for this case.
They need a D in any of them.
Yes.
Under the current law, it would be a D1 of your burden. So it's still a D5.
D5.
But I think the issue was with the parking requirements, the bulk, the waiver, that's less now than it was?
The bulk?
Which is more advantageous to the applicant, correct?
Yes, the bulk, yes. Yeah, you eliminate a few.
But not the parking spaces?
No, I think the parking you had and the depth. If you go by ORSIS, it could be short five.
1.8, right?
You may have to run out to 84, something around that, up to higher.
Any other questions by members of the board? Questions by members of the public? No? Mr. Fran and Tony, come on up. Come on, please. You're on video, you gotta come up. You want a floor, you gotta come up. Name an address, please.
Vincent Fran and Tony, 159 Mount Prospect.
Will you swear the, are you asking a question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Baumann, did you personally visit the site?
Yes.
When?
Oh, I'd say about six months ago.
Right, you stated that there's a food store across the street.
No, I said, within walking distance.
Right, are you aware that the store closed in June?
No.
Okay, just wanted to record the show.
Well, it really doesn't matter. The point that I'm trying to make is that the parking demand isn't there because it's at an inconvenient location for public use. That it is within walking distance to other stores that people might otherwise have to travel by party gear.
I just wanted the record to be correct.
Sure.
Any other questions by members of the board? I would like to ask Frankie a question.
Yes.
Is that a flood zone?
I believe it is. I asked for it in my letter to certify it. He came in for building permits, he'd have to do that before. And anyway, he certifies. Yeah, it's, yeah. He'd have to, you know.
Mr. Harris, that's true, it's a flood zone?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in a flood zone.
It is in a flood zone.
I think, I could look at the plan, I think the flood zone is elevation 10, the lowest elevation of the buildings, I think 9.7.
It's above the flood zone?
The garages are just a little below that.
Garage?
Yes.
What about the entrances on the other side?
No, the entrances on Davidson are well above.
Well above?
That one, that one entrance is right at it, and...
Which entrance?
The entrance right behind the studios.
Oh, the entrance to the studios?
Yeah, the studios, yes, also.
That's the way to get into the studios?
Right, that's correct. But from what I understand, I talked to the super, and he said, he's been there 30 years, and he said they only had, they had a water problem one time in 30 years. So it hasn't been seen again. And also, from what I understand, they do have, because of that one incident, the manager has instituted a floodproofing mechanism to put up boards, which is acceptable. I've done that on several projects before, so I don't see that as being a major issue.
That's been done already, Mr.?
Yes, he has.
Any other questions? You said putting up boards or boats?
Boards, boards.
All right. Just wanted to make sure I was clear about that. Okay, that's the end of the testimony?
That concludes our presentation.
Okay, any members of the public wish to give testimony? Mr. Fran and Tony, come on up, and you have to swear with your right hand.
I'd like to raise your right hand with regards to this matter, do you swear the testimony here about to give service is true?
I do.
Thank you.
I'd just like to address the board, because there's too many of these cases that over my 51 years I've seen, that they build what they're not allowed to build, they enjoy the benefits of the income they get from these units, and I, and you, Mr. Chairman, and all the other taxpayers, for 35 years as the manager testified, I've been subsidizing his income from there. I've been paying taxes, and he hasn't been paying a fair share of those three units for over 35 years, he testified. And it's a little sad. If you choose to, I hope you don't approve it, but if you do, I don't know if it could be done, maybe we ought to start something new. If you want to get approval, let him pay all the back taxes in 35 years of what those three units should have been paying, where I and every other resident of Belleville had a subsidizing. So please consider that.
Any other members of the public wish to give testimony? Do you wish to sum up?
Very briefly, thank you for your dialogue on this, it's helpful. We're here because we have an existing condition, as I said in my opening. I think the key here are our last two witnesses, and Mr. Chairman, you even touched on the question of flood. The building's well protected. The parking situation is really a non-starter. There's always available parking, it's been that way. There are no traffic issues resulting from the extra three units. Mr. Baumann, the last words he said were the most important, is whether or not the site can accommodate these units. That's the standard for the D5 variance, as far as the positive criteria is concerned. And clearly, I think we've demonstrated that to you here tonight. We've also, I believe, met the negative criteria, and we ask you for your approval. Thank you. Members of the board, your pleasure.
My philosophy is a little different. I agree with Vinnie in a philosophical point, yeah. Yeah, they kind of weigh it, yeah. I don't know you that. Now I want to, you know, money. So, to me, penalizing them now, after a horse is out of the barn, it's fruitless. Now we have an opportunity to get the money that we should be getting for that particular building. We don't have to enjoy a stick shit or anything, talk about back taxes, that's out of our pocket. But we do have an opportunity to ride along and have Frank oversee two things. One, if there is an ordinance that talks about the size of the apartment, it's a great point, I need to even click right now, so Frank can check into that for us. And two, let's get the tax assessor to properly assess the property, so we can get the money that we are supposed to get. That's my position. That's it.
Mr. Public, you said, since you brought it up, I do have some records that I obtained today. And... What I obtained today was the new records on this case. The assessment did go up. The assessment actually went up...
Went up as a 44 unit, right?
Yes.
And then as a 47?
And even as a 44, that assessment went up over $300,000, actually around $315,000.
But now it may go up even more.
You know, it may go up more. The one problem I have with this, and Mr. Shelton hit on it earlier, and that is, in these studio apartments, you take a studio number A and B, you put them together, they don't even make the size of one of the one-bedroom units. And I have a problem with it being so small, especially Studio A, it's ridiculously small. Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. You talk, I'll be talking. And I may be in favor of leaving maybe Studio C alone, but I think Studio A and B should be combined. And that's my feeling.
And I understand that, and I think, like Mr. Shelton pointed out, it should be done per ordinance. If there's an ordinance, we apply on the ordinance. If they meet the ordinance, end the story. If they don't, then act, then act, combine them, and make it one unit.
Well, they're asking for three more units. We don't have to approve three more units.
I'm not arguing that, I'm saying, I'm saying if we're going, I think we should approve it, we should get our money, and we should make sure they comply with existing code. That's it. And that's Mr. DeLorenzo, that's not ours.
All right, but I don't have to look, yes, I'm here.
Okay, then, no.
You have a little weak situation with regard to those experiences.
I, I, I know what you're saying, but if there are longer-term leases with those, it might be problematic.
What do you mean currently?
Yeah.
Well, they're already illegal. What happens in the case of an illegal lease?
I just.
Well, let me ask you a question. What happens in the case of an illegal lease?
I don't know if it's illegal. The three units were served, but not approved.
Thank you, so that makes them illegal.
Okay. But then you have a, an innocent tenant, maybe, who knows?
If I, if I may.
Go ahead.
We, we, we can do the A and B together. We can do that together. And we appreciate your comments, Mr. Milano. We can do that.
If you can do it, that's fine.
You can make it into a one-bedroom.
So we can, we can modify our, our request.
Make it one-bedroom and have the other one as a studio.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be forty-six.
Forty-six.
A and B will be combined.
A and B combined.
But it doesn't, it does not circumvent, as Mr. Sheldon said, as long as they comply, if there is an ordinance.
Correct. That, that's, that's the laws of law now.
That's what I want to say. So regardless of Tetra Camp, it's, it's, I'm okay.
I don't know, what's the other members' thing? I have, is there a question?
Well, I appreciate that compromise, that you would be willing to merge A and B into a single apartment. I, I agree with Mr. Milano that we do need to finally get to the bottom of this ordinance, which I, I fully believe exists.
I don't know.
Sometime around, remember he tells me around two thousand fourteen is when, when the, Kevin, Councilman Kennedy introduced this ordinance. It was passed, uh, very quickly thereafter, but we have to, we have to.
I think we missed him telling me, I, I remember, I don't.
Well, technically, also, if we were to deny this, then they would have to eliminate the units and, uh, you would get two more garages back. So you would actually have more, two more spaces. But the, the thing is, I think this is a good compromise and, uh.
And revenue.
And revenue, yeah. Well, the revenue they've been getting for thirty-five years.
No, revenue from the town.
Well, that, that also has to increase above what's already been increased as a valuation.
Correct.
Okay.
I also just want to, uh, share Mr. Milano's sentiments with, with Mr. Fran and Tony. I agree that, you know, these sorts of things irritate me to no end, that, uh, a building can go years and years being undertaxed. But as I understand, our role in the management, we have no power to undo this. We can't demand, we can't make it a condition, we can't, uh, ask or demand that the back taxes be paid. We just, that, it's, the township's tough luck that this went undetected for all these years. No, I, I wish there was something we could do to, uh, to get a little extra income, because we could, you know, probably could hire another teacher or employ another police officer in the township for what has been lost, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With that, with that said, if I may, I made a motion to approve, uh, for forty-six. And obviously, a little requirements, meaning the zoning officers.
And, and that stu, enlisted on the plan, Studio A and B will be combined, and Studio C will then technically become number forty-six. A and B would become number forty-five, and that would become number forty-six.
Frank, did I miss anything?
No, this is gonna apply for permits for the.
And what we'll do, so, so we have this on record for, forever. We will submit a revised plan that merges those two units together.
We could just take a wall down and then add stuff inside to make a bedroom and a bathroom separately.
Yeah, but we'd like to see something, even if it's that section, just so Frank has it in his, in his records.
Right.
They need that, I need that for the building. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And, and also show the, the layout of where the, the bathroom and the kitchen areas proceed. Do it all at one time, so he has it. Because technically, that's not part of the building at all right now. Okay?
Thank you.
As far as modifying the plan, maybe we could borrow President Trump's Sharpie.
Motion made by Mr. Milano, seconded by Mr. Caruso, with the conditions mentioned. Clark, call the roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Caruso?
Yes.
Giugno?
Yes.
Catalino?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Milano?
Yes.
Delgertia?
Yes. Move the seven to the left.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you too.
Yes, thank you.
Leave it. I don't want my name on it. This is my chair.
Oh, I have to say.
It's old, like this car from the mission.
This is what? This is Mark.
Is that gonna be next week?
Silver fest. Silver fest.
And I can use it?
Do you wish for me to approach?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question.
Of course.
Everybody. Yeah, we all travel in the same circles.
How many babies?
Thank you.
Yes, this next application is ZB two thousand and nineteen dash eleven, one sixty D with a avenue, um, one sixty D with LLC. Applicant proposes a two-story rear addition in order to convert an existing two-and-a-half-story frame, single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. This was started, I believe, at our last meeting in August.
August first, yeah.
August first, and now we're gonna continue it now.
I believe you had an architect, a planner, and a member of the, uh, the LLC that owns the property testify.
Correct. Clyde Otis, uh, post-polic on behalf of the applicant. Again, may I please the board? Uh, yes, at the, uh, last hearing, we had, um, those three individuals testify. As I reviewed the transcript, I understand that they concluded their testimony. At the conclusion of that, uh, but before going into deliberation by this board, um, there were a moment where there was counsel with the, uh, with my client, and, um, there was changes that were agreed to that would be made. We are back here now, um, based upon a judgment from that date to this date to, um, I guess if you wish, uh, you'll tell me how you wish to proceed. We've submitted revised plans that, uh, we think comply with all of the wishes and concerns of the board. Um, and so we want to have that admitted in and let this matter come forward to a vote.
Well, there's additional documents. Do you wish to give testimony on the additional document?
We need, we definitely wish to have those identified for the record. And, uh, we can give testimony as you, as you may wish for us to do. I don't, we have no problem talking about the changes that were made, so that you can know that they in fact comply with your concerns fully. And I'll try to be brief in that regard.
Mr. Otis, my notes reflect that there was, in addition to what you mentioned in terms of modifications, uh, Mr. Eben, are you Mr. Eben?
I'm Mr. Eben, yes.
On August first, part of his testimony was, because this is going from a single-family, you're requesting a two-family house. And obviously, the testimony comes into play in terms of are there other two-family houses, three-family houses in the neighborhood. Um, and I believe Mr. Eben stated that he checked on meters and mailboxes, but he had not gone to the assessor. And some of the board members wanted, when he came back, wanted better information. Um, and I'm seeing something, which may be it. Better information on to what's in the neighborhood in terms of beyond single-family, with some authority. You know, so other than, I counted meters, I looked at mailboxes.
Correct.
Either go to the assessor. Is, is that gonna be on display tonight? Are you gonna be testifying this?
Yes, and just so that the board is, um, clear. We, um, uh, secured the property cards for, um, two-family houses, legal two-family houses from your, um, tax assessor's office, um, with regard to blocks sixty-nine oh one, sixty-nine oh two, sixty-nine oh three, and sixty-nine oh four. And, um, those have been inserted into the new plans. It is page SP one, and that is a new page in the revised plans. And it shows these homes, um, highlighted or outlined, I guess, the two-family houses. Um, and you'll see that for the street avenue that's, uh, and Mr. Eben will, will, will testify to this, but you'll see the blocks, um, that, that we, where we called for, uh, records on. Six oh five is on there. Um, you should not read into the fact that nothing is highlighted. We just didn't call for any records from that particular block. So, um, and that's, uh, Mr. Eben will continue his testimony. And he, that's, he's the first one up to address just this point.
All right, Mr. Eben, you are still under oath from August first, and Tom Harris and Frank Delano are also still under oath.
So yours, please. I took it upon myself, uh, under the direction of the chairman, to get information from the tax assessor. We got information from the tax assessor. And there were two points that, uh, had to be made. One, there was a long discussion on where the two-family zone ended and started. And so I, I put the partial part of the zoning map, and I think, uh, I think I was wrong. Uh, I thought it started on Lloyd. It starts at the back of the houses that face on Lloyd. The back of that house, that's the two-family on the, uh, west side. And on the east side, it's actually back on the houses that face Van Houten. And that's where it breaks down and it's all two-family going back.
Mr. Eben, why don't we mark this? I know we have something, but yours is colorized and.
Oh, okay.
It's different, so.
Yours should be colorized though, it's not colorized in print? Well, it's, it's gray and white.
Yeah.
My, my question is, where does, where does?
A one, please.
I, I think we're up to A three. A one was the notices, A two with the.
Right, this will be A three.
Okay.
So, so that was the first discussion in terms of, um, where the, where the zones were. The, the two-family zone was, I thought it was actually closer than, than what you thought it was, and you were correct.
So, so both sides of Lloyd are technically one family?
Are technically one family.
And goes, goes one family all the way over to Giralam?
That's correct. That's correct. And then, and what happens is that.
And then there's a two-family that changes at Giralam, but it's below.
It's below.
I believe it's at O.
And then it shows where the, the east part of Van Houten is two-family. And it goes along the back and it, in fact, it backs up on the, on the, uh, BG zone, in the one area. And then two-family picks up on Rose Meyer, uh, just above, above where we are. So that was it. That was the, the zoning question. I think you were correct. I, you live here, you're better than I am. I was doing it from memory. That's why I put the zoning map on the, on this map now.
Don't give me a Big Eagle, please.
You already have a Big Eagle.
I could have said it better myself.
So what I also did, the second part was, the second part was, how many houses are, are two-family houses? And I, and actually, like, going to the, to the tax records, there actually are more than what I thought there were. So either somebody is, you know, missing a mailbox or whatever, but, but, uh, that need be, be it as made. So what we did is, we took, we made this, we took your tax map, we took our property or the applicant's property, we highlighted in red. And then, again, we took, we, we looked at all of the houses. And then I'm gonna flip this drawing now.
Before you flip that.
Was that marked?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I marked it A three.
Good.
And then I'm gonna mark the next one, which is the same drawing with a two-hundred-foot radius, uh, that I put on the map. We'll mark that A four, okay? So it's basically the same drawing, but it shows the two-hundred-foot radius. So I'll mark that A four.
Yes.
It shows a two-hundred-foot radius, and then I also showed a five-hundred-foot radius, just to give you some perspective as to where the bulk of the two-family houses, uh, exist. And the bulk exists, there are basically twenty-nine homes in, within the two-hundred-foot radius. And there are ten of the twenty-nine are two-family. And so that's just about thirty-four percent of the homes within the two-hundred-foot radius are two-family houses. And I wanted to point that out. And what I also did is, I went to Google Map, and I made several copies of several, uh, of the elevations of the house. I'd like to pass that through. If you don't mind passing one, take one and pass one. Remember the school, take one, pass one. And we can mark, and I'll, I'll mark, I'll mark, uh, we'll need a copy for the engineer and a copy for.
Is it just one page or?
No, it's, it's, uh, several pages. I, I used the top page, which is an aerial Google Map, plus our picture of our applicant's property. And I make that as the, as the, uh, the marked copy. And I, who do I give that to? You? Somebody has to take the marked copy, I guess. I'll mark this as one copy.
Yeah, we're gonna mark as A.
A five.
A five is one, one set.
And who would get, who officially get that? Frank or?
Given to, uh, to the board.
Oh, for the other. Frank, you get your own personal copy too. So what I would like to do is actually, uh, I'll point out physically where these two-family houses are. And then if we, if you want, I can go through the pictures and actually show you the, the homes, one by one. One picture is about eight pictures that I, that I took off Google Map, because that was, it'd be better than me going around taking a picture. Say, take a picture. All right? Uh, so again, the red is one sixty, the width, the applicant's property. Uh, the two big houses that are on about half the size of our property in terms of its area are face-on homes. area are face-on homes, right here on the corner, and what I would like you to do is just turn the page to the next page. And what you'll see is the actual back of those two properties, because the front of the property in Google Maps is just a bunch of trees. It's very much tree on the front of the property, you can't see them. So, I took the picture from the back, and you can see the two houses here. This is the back of those two houses, and how big they are, and the fact that they're two-family houses. I just wanted to show you that one. Then what I did is, I actually went to the next picture, and we'll just go through them one at a time.
This one here is the two-way.
These two right here, but from the back, because the front has the street trees, you can't see anything. The next one is from the corner, from the opposite corner, right where I'm putting my finger, right here, looking at this big house that's on the corner, and that's when you can see the side, which faces the width, the front, which faces homes.
Which one is this?
This is, this one right here.
So, it's still back of them two houses?
Back of those, the side, which faces the width, and the front, which faces homes, and you can barely see the next house, which is the next house over. All right? I think that's 16 homes. You can barely see, but you see there's trees in the front, that's why you can't get a front view. The next picture is the house directly across the street from these two big ones. You can see that we just covered the front of the house. That's the house across the street. That is 211 Homes. All right? Then I go down to the corner on the north side of homes, and the next picture should be, if I did this right, are the first two houses on Hornblower. Actually, the house on the corner has a home street address. I believe it's 125 Homes, even though it kind of faces the corner. The entrance is really on Hornblower, but.
Which one is that?
That's the big house right here. The big Victorian, I call it Victorian. And then next to it is a 1970, not a bungalow, but a 1970 house that.
It's the White House?
No, that's the brick house next to the right. This house right next to the right. The next house after that, the White House, is a single-family house. So, that's not colored. You can see the third house down. So, that's not colored, and that's the.
What picture?
The picture is, on the second picture, the third house down, is a single-family house. The reason why I did the pictures is because I think I can relate the pictures to the map, and I think that that gives you an idea of where we're going. All right? The next house is, believe it or not, is bungalow, and this one right here, and those are two-family houses.
What in that?
And there, this one, and this one. All right? And then the next house, which you actually see in that picture right here, is the, is this picture, is this third one down, right there, and then the last one within the 200 feet is the house next door, which is a similar-looking house, and that's this one right here. I did not take a picture of this one, because just the 200-foot line, just the corner. I thought this was sufficient enough to explain to you that there are 10 houses within the 200 feet that are two-family houses, and even though they look like one-family houses, they are two-family houses, and that's what the architect testified to last time, is that we're going to keep this, the look of our house as a one-family house, even though that we hope to get approval from you for us a two-family house. And that, Mr. Chairman concludes my testimony on this, and I thank you for your help, and I'll always go to the tax assessor from now on, forever.
Very good idea.
And I'm up with the questions, of course.
Questions for members of the board. Mr. Ballon.
Just refresh my memory now, what we agreed to on the property.
That's going to come with the architect.
Okay, cool, that's fine.
I don't want to jump on his testimony.
So, you're saying within the 200 feet of this property, there is five two-families?
10.
I mean, 10, I'm sorry, 10 two-families, out of how many?
29 homes within the 200 feet. So, it's 34%. And that's why, that's why I also, it is no requirement for a 500 radius, but I drew a 500 radius, so you can see where the others are outside, and they're sparse, and they're, just this corner seems to be, you know.
Do you know when this was created as a one-family zone?
Do I know when it was created as a one-family zone?
When it was decided to be a one-family zone?
That I don't know, but I testified last time that the bulk of the buildings were built in the late '30s or early '40s, after the Depression.
Really?
Similar, well, and there might be one or two houses that are older, like that Victorian over here.
But you provided us a list, and I assume, because there's more than 10 here, so I assume this is within the 500 feet.
That's within the 500 feet.
All right, the list you gave me, within the 500 feet, there is only two built in the date you said. Everything else is 1900, even in the 1800s, 1928, 1930.
Again, this house, this house right in here, the second house, was built probably in the '60s or the '70s.
Which?
The second one right next to the big Victorian.
What's that at?
That's unfortunate, I can't see with my little.
Is that the stuck up?
The second, the second house in on Hornblower.
The second house in on 159, is that?
Yeah, I think it's 159.
59 was built in 1967.
Yeah, 1967.
That's the only one, though. Then there was one other ones I found in this 500 feet that was built, I believe, in 1944, but everything else was built 1930 or before.
It was either built before the Depression or after the Depression. Nothing was built during the Depression. My house was designed in 1928, but it wasn't built until 1938.
1927, 1917.
Right.
1942, I found one on 1942, at 282 Union Avenue. That's 1942. I don't know if that's within the 200 or outside.
That's within the 500.
It's in the 500, okay. And that one we just discussed was in the 500.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, we have 1930, 1930, 1930. Well, this must have been a boom year in 1930.
It wasn't.
1928, 1928.
They got their money out of.
1900, 1877, 1900, 1896. That's when my father was born. 1914, 1927, 1929, 1923, 1923, 1924, 1967, that's the one I think I told you about, that's within the 500 feet, 1900, and 1896. So, really, only the one, the only two that were built from 1942 to 1967, there's only the two, 1942, 1967, were within the 500-foot radius, but none of them were in the 200-foot radius.
This one was in the 200-foot radius.
Which one?
1967, this one right here.
That is? Where is that on here?
That's next to the Victorian.
On Hornblower.
So, on Hornblower?
On Hornblower, yes.
One here?
All right, so there's one, 1967.
But when was the zone actually the one-family zone? I mean, there was a time in Belville, I don't really know the history, but there was a time in most of the communities in New Jersey that there was no quote-unquote official zone map.
Mr. Eben, can you tell from the date of when the house was built, whether or not it was built as a single-family or ultimately, or some time converted into a two-family?
If the house is an older house, like the one, the Victorian on the corner, it probably was a big, single-family house at one time. Whether it was converted, or when it was converted, I don't know. And I don't know, I don't think I have those records.
And I just, Chairman, I just only wanted to be, for the record, the list that you have are all the two families on those four blocks, not necessarily within the 200 or the 500. It's for the four blocks that I had mentioned before. 6901, 6902, 6903, and 6904. Just that the record's clear.
This is another block down here, which, you know, outside of the 200 feet, but it's another block.
And it would be more what's on SP1.
You testified, wait, wait, you testified, you did, that within the 200-foot radius, there was 10.
Yes.
10 two-family houses.
That's correct.
This is way more than 10 here.
Which is why I'm trying to make sure that we're clear on that.
Okay.
So, you have two, you have two sheets.
This is the 500.
You have the SP1. Well, no, it's not just the 500. That's what I want to make sure that we're clear about. You have two sheets. One is the SP1, which is part of the revised plans, and that shows the two-family houses on four separate city blocks. The other, he has also done additional work, which was not part of the revised plan. So, the tax records, the abstracts that you're looking at are what you find here that support the SP1. That's how this document was created. He also did a loop to show the 200 and the 500 feet, and that's a separate discussion that was never produced to this board. It's marked as A4, but I just wanted to make sure that we were clear, that I don't want you to think that the tax records, because they won't line up in terms of the numbers, not with that 500-foot. It'll line up with this, with SP1. That's what we submitted.
The SP1 shows 10 homes, right?
10 homes within the 200 feet.
10 homes within the 200 feet.
I can count them out.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right. Yes, yes. We'll still show that, yes. You can still show that. You're correct, right there, yes.
That's right. 10 homes. You count those gray boxes.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. And the 10 is just a tip.
One of them is just a tip in the property.
Now, thank you, you're right.
Well, we have one within the 200 that was built in 1967, correct?
That's correct. The Victorian is built probably in the late 1800s.
That's about 1887.
I'm not looking for that. I'm looking at the ones that was built in 44. Hold on, hold on, I'll find it here. It's in here, 42, I'm, everything else was 1930 or before.
Right, I said in the 1930s.
Originally, you said.
1939, I did say that, you're right.
39, well, there's a big difference between 30 and 39.
42 is top page in Mission.
I don't know, 87?
Top page.
Third page? The one that was built in 42?
Top page.
Okay, yes, you're right, okay. That is 282 Union Avenue. Can you tell us where that is?
Union Avenue, that's this one right here.
And that's within the 500?
Within the 500, right.
All right, so really, there's only one that was built in 1967.
In the 200.
In the 200. Okay. Everything else is all old. Very good. 1930 or before.
All right. Any other questions by members of the board?
Oh, yes, I do have.
I knew that, despite looking at you.
Let me first point out, with this 200-foot radius and the 10 other two-family homes, notice, I just want to point out to all my board colleagues, that all of those two-family homes are on streets other than DeWitt. They're not, these are not two-family houses on DeWitt. The reason I'm making this point is, we think back a couple months ago, we had a case on Quinton Street, 16 Quinton Street. The applicant wanted to build a two-family home there. The argument was made that the two-family would be consistent with the neighborhood, and we did the research, and it turned out that almost all of the homes on Quinton Street, with one exception, were all one-family. So, I did my own little accounting of the tax records for DeWitt. This home, go to the colorized map, the subject property is almost at the epicenter, or to appeal to some of the engineers and the audience, it's at the center of mass or the center of gravity for that RA's one-zone, which is a one-family zone. So, I, out of curiosity, I went to the tax records, and I looked at the designation of all of the houses along DeWitt. So, let me tell my colleagues here what I found. 136 DeWitt, one-family, and these are, this is sequentially, these are all the house numbers on DeWitt. 136 DeWitt, one-family, 147 DeWitt, one-family, 149 DeWitt, one-family, 151 DeWitt, one-family, 155 DeWitt, one-family, 159, one-family, 160, one-family, 164, one-family, 165, one-family, 168, 169, 171, 172, 174, 175, 176, 177, 78, 80, 81, 82. Every single home, and you can see that reflected by all the whiteness that's along DeWitt there. Those are all one-family homes.
The only one that's a two-family is this one right here.
Well, that, what's the house number for that?
You know, I can't read the number without a magnifying glass, and it's outside the 200, it's slightly outside the 200-foot, and the three houses on Rosemore, Rossmore, are two-family houses.
At least up through 182. Every single house, left and right, or a couple hundred feet, according to the state tax records, which are reflected by the township, these are all one-family, all one-family homes. That's the characteristic.
That's, that's, that's correct, and that's, I testified last month that this house was really, even though it faces this street, faces the width, it's still kind of anchored by these two large two-families, and the two families that were, that I saw, where I just counted the mailboxes and the electric meters, which wasn't the right way to do it, and I fell on my sword, and I said so. So, what we did this time is, we got the records, and we knew the records, and you're absolutely correct. This corner is basically, and it's on Hornblower, and this is a church on the corner, which is a little bit larger building, so you're right, it is what it is. But this house, all of my testimony last month was that this house and this lot is perfect for a two-family house because of the adjacency to the two big two-families, right, that face on Homes, and because the lot is almost twice as big as what is required for a single-family. And that's what I testified to. I stand by the testimony, and I don't deny that the rest of the block, except for this one house down here, is, are all single-family. I never denied that.
But all of these lots on DeWitt are extra-large lots.
Extra-long lots, they're not extra-wide.
But that's the characteristic, that's the unique nature of this part of Belville along DeWitt, that these are all fairly large, relatively large lots, all one-family homes, and we're now being essentially asked to set a precedent by putting a two-family in that center of what has always been a one-family area.
With all due respect, if this house was over here as a two-family house, I wouldn't be here. I would have told my client, no way.
Oh, no, don't say that.
No, I advise my clients accordingly. All right? That's what I would do. I would say, the chances, if my client wants to go ahead with a project, and he wants to pay me for that, that's fine. But I always advise my client, what I, you know, I asked my client to clean up the lot prior to coming here, and he did. So, those are the kind of things that I kind of do.
I'm not arguing that, boy. Based upon what you said, if he told you to come here anyway, then you try and testify it anyway.
You know, and then may it just fall where they will. I think, I think what I did is take all of your constructive criticism, I don't want to say criticism, because it was constructive criticism, and I fell on my sword, and I did the homework, and now I'm presenting it as such.
Can we flip that over?
To the other side. It's the same map without the.
But only here on the map, right? You're.
We're here. The two, the two big ones are here. These two are here, then there's a single-family, and then there's continuation on Hornblower of 1, 2, 3, 4, two-family houses, and that one two-family is right about, on DeWitt is right about here.
I also wanted to comment that citing a 500-foot radius, with all due respect, I think is a little disingenuous. Of course, as you expand the circle, you're going to pick up more and two-family homes, because you're going into other zones that allow two-family. You know, if you went to a 750-foot radius or a 1,000-foot radius.
I have an answer for you.
Okay.
I toyed, I really tore myself, should I show a 500-foot radius? Am I going to get a question like that? And when I, when I did the 500-foot, let me turn it back over, and when I did the 500-foot radius, I said to myself, oh, there are other two-family houses, but they're less than the impact of this corner. And that's what I was trying to show with the 500 versus the 200. There was no disingenuous, and I'm telling you, under oath, but I'm telling you the truth. That's why I, that's why I showed the 500. And you're right, if I showed a larger 750 or 1,000, I would, there would be less two-family houses. As you go back into the one-family zone, which if you look over here, this is all As you go back into the one-family zone, which if you look over here, this is all one-family zone, and the only, the only outside of the one-family is the strip stores that are over here.
Well, the largest circles are picking up the RV and RC zones to the south. Once you hit the 500 feet, you're now approaching into zones that do allow two and even three families.
That's correct, that's correct. As you go further east, you get more, you get more...
And south.
East and south, you get that. And that's, again, that's my prerogative, and I, when I drew that 500 circle, I said, should I keep the 500 circle or not keep it? And I decided, in my mind, I decided yes, because I did want to say, if the question came up, that there's obviously less two-family houses as you go further into the zone, and that's, that's obvious from the zoning map. This one-family zone goes blocks in that direction.
Now, back to what we were talking about, Mr. Shelton was talking about. I believe you were talking about the two-family on DeWitt that's within the 500-foot zone, am I correct?
That's correct.
Oh, that's the one we're doing. Point it please.
I do.
Yes, okay, I found it in the list.
Which, what was the house number?
And the house number is 184 DeWitt Avenue, and it was built in 1914, before it was any zoning laws.
That's why it's there. That's why it's there. That's correct.
Okay, so, and this is a D1 application, am I correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And even the nearest cross street, which is Home Street, when I looked at the designation for the houses there, yes, there are three houses on Home Street nearby that are two-family, but, and those are 210, 211, and 214, but 191, 195, 196, 199, 200, 203, 204, 207, 208, 217, 221, 227, 228, 233, 234, 236, 237, they're all listed as one-family, so...
You're going west on...
And, well, east and west on, but, but I wanted to get a sense for the characteristic of this part of, of the nature of this part of Belleville, and this is predominantly one-family area, one of the few remaining one-family areas of this township. And again, we're being asked to, in my opinion, kind of set a precedent by allowing a two-family to go into a street that has always been...
Everything, everything on both sides are one.
All one.
All the length.
As far as...
Both sides are one.
Throw a stone, it's all one-family.
I mean, the two families that are next to it are technically not on DeWitt, they're technically on Homes.
That's what he said.
Right, right.
And that's what I testified to.
I'm not arguing with him. That's what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is, why, why can you justify us tampering with a one-family zone when everything on both sides of the street are all one-family, except for that one that was built before the zoning law even was in effect, in 1914?
Mr., you believe you want to go back to talking about the nature of the property that we're talking about?
The property is, of all the properties on DeWitt, is the, is a property that is not kept, or has not been kept for, from what my understanding is, for a long time.
You mean, kept up?
Kept up for a long time.
But that doesn't justify us tampering with the zone.
With all due respect, let me finish my thought process. And I want to be absolutely respectful, okay?
I'm not trying not to be respectful, I'm just saying, I don't think somebody not keeping up with their property causes an excuse for us tampering with the zone because the person was negligent.
The former person, the former person was...
The former person was negligent, and because he was negligent, the current person picked this up at a very good price, probably.
Well, I'm not, I'm not prepared to concede that at all.
Oh, okay.
That was not necessarily...
I don't know. This was a foreclosure, as I remember what was going on.
Correct, but, and it was, I will admit it was below market value, but I'm not going to say that it wasn't a considerable price, especially considering the state of the home. And when I do conclude, I mean, that's largely part of the argument, is that you do have somebody that's trying to come in to rehabilitate a property that we all, that badly needs it. I walk there, I'm an attorney, and I walk the property, and I go to these properties, so I...
I'm not, I mean, it doesn't need to be taken care of, but if you're going to invest in a property, you should always know what you're walking into. We've had a number of cases like that here, where people say, well, I bought this, and I bought this, and I bought... It's like, back to what you learn in high school, caveat emptor, let the buyer beware what they're buying.
Understood.
Okay. Go ahead.
Again, my perspective as a planner and as a person that sits on the zoning board in my home, I wish the guy across the street from my house would make it a two-family house and fix it. You know, I've been complaining for years about that house, but, you know, it, and I complain all over, all over my town, but, and no one listens to me.
No one listens to you.
No one listens to me, and I would go for a two-family house if someone would fix it up.
Are you in a one-family zone?
I'm in a one-family zone, in the same situation, in the same situation as this situation. I'm two houses up from the corner of South Valley Road and West Orange, if you're familiar with it. And South Valley Road compared to where I live is almost like day and night for the type, except for a couple of houses on my street that are rundown, and have been rundown for years, and nobody seems to...
Well, isn't a one-family zone considered somewhat of an exclusive zone because it's one-family?
I never used the word exclusive, because that gets into another discussion that I don't think we should get into.
All right, we don't have to get into that.
Each person buys the house that he or she can afford in that particular community. When I bought, when I bought my house 43 years ago, 44 years ago, you know, my father said, may he rest in peace, my father said, well, when are you putting aluminum siding on a house? And I said, Dad, I'm an architect, I can't put aluminum siding on my house. And you look at that house, it's got aluminum siding, that one's got vinyl, so, I paint my house every five years, that's what I like. And I have a nice house in a marginal, but has, over the 46 years, become a marginal neighborhood.
Well, I'm just saying, if a person is going to look to buy a one-family house, they usually look in an area where most of them are one-family, and they would frown that there's a neighborhood with all 3, 4, 2, you know...
I have a two-family across the street from me.
You just said it was a one-family.
It's a one-family, no, slightly off the block, it's a one-family, but right across the street, I was there when he built the two-family house.
Okay.
But he added the house, and let me tell you, the two-family house looks a lot better than the one-family house.
Did it come before your board?
I have no idea, I was very young at that point, 46 years ago.
All right, let's continue, because I don't want to get Mr. Ronald involved, so...
I just want to make one more point. Both Gabby and George were not on the board when we heard Mill Street case, but we heard it was a one-family, the applicant wanted to, tried to make the argument that it would only become viable financially if it could be converted to a two...
And it was a foreclosure, don't forget that.
And we said, no, it has to stay as a one-family. They fixed it up, it's a showplace, and they sold it a year later for almost $400,000.
Yes, they did. And don't even have a garage.
No garage, no garage, and on Mill Street with only parking on one side of the street. And we heard the same argument, we, the applicant couldn't realize a return on their investment if it wasn't allowed to become a two-family, and we dismissed that, and it stayed at one-family in a beautiful, beautiful showplace.
I don't talk about investment, I talk about, I talked about the painting aspect.
I ask questions.
And exactly what I testified to is that this is sort of an anchor of two-family houses. Now, no one can deny that's what it is, and I, and I think I testified honestly that had this been a property here, I would advise my client, no, not to go for it. If he still, or he, she wanted still to go for it, and wanted to hire me as a planner, then I would, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a job for me, and I take the job, and I do my best, and I think I've done my best here.
I agree.
Thank you.
Well, okay. We have any more witnesses?
Are you still asking questions, Mr. Ogerst?
No.
All right, any more questions by members of the board? Any questions by members of the public of this witness? None, okay, do you have another witness?
Yes.
Okay, next one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, can I have your name?
William Severino.
I saw you were not here previously. Could you raise your right hand? With regard to this application, these are the testimony you're about to give, shall we the truth?
Yes.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
William Severino, last name is S.E.V.E.R.I.N.O.
Thank you.
Mr. Severino is...
Yeah, Mark.
Mark, okay, I thought he was listening to you. Take a look at this.
Mr. Severino is here, Mr. Guskind was the previous, you heard testimony from him as their architect. He was unavailable this evening. Mr. Severino is familiar with the plans and the revisions that have been made to the plan, and is here to offer, answer any questions with regards, and to provide testimony with regard to the actual changes to the plan. I don't know whether or not you need me to square him in or to...
Well, I've sworn him in, I'm sure we are aware of Mr. Severino. Have you been here before, or no?
Maybe a number of years ago.
Okay, why don't you just briefly give us his background, so we can, as an architect, just talk to us.
Yes, graduated NJFD by, Bachelor of Architecture in 1991, became a registered architect in 1996, has been practicing since then. Appeared before numerous boards in Hudson, Bergen, Union Counties, as well as everywhere else, Morris County, so...
And you hold licenses in Jersey and New York. And you're in good standing?
Yes, I think he's an expert, yes.
Thank you.
He can testify to that.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Severino, you also have a set of plans that you brought with you.
Yes, I do.
And that is the complete set of plans that was submitted, the revised plans?
Yes, that is the D2019 dated plans.
Okay, can we mark that?
If we, if we have to, if we do, don't need to mark.
Okay. So, Mr. Severino, I would direct your attention to T-line?
Yes.
And that should be the first page of that plan?
Yes.
And as you're aware, there were changes that were requested by the applicant with regard to parking at that location?
Yes, the request, I read through the transcript, the request was to provide off-street parking for the four cars that were required by the four bedrooms that are proposed in the two apartments. The garage has been shown to be removed, and parking area has been shown with four parking spaces and sufficient drive area so that each car can pack out and proceed down the driveway to leave in a forward direction.
And is there also an addition of any landscaping in that parking area?
To the sides of the parking area is landscaping shown, and the existing condition of the site behind that garage is basically grass and wood as existing, and I'm sure it would be improved and remade.
And you, there's also another cloud on that, on that page. I'm going to call it an indication that there would be revision to the page?
Yes, that would be the revision to the driveway areas. So that's just square footage areas, driveway obviously got larger because we're putting a parking area back there, and that's reflected within that revision, though.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want me to pause for questions on the particular page or take him to the other pages.
Well, the question is, I'll ask if any members have questions based upon the testimony given already? None? Okay, then we go to the next page.
Thank you. I would ask you to go to A2. And Mr. Severino, you said that you, you read the transcript and you became aware of some of the concerns of this board. I think one of the concerns was with regard to the attic space, and whether or not adding the doorbers, first of all, as well as the access to the attic, might make that something that, would make it attractive for improper living up there, is that correct?
That was what was in the transcript from the last meeting, yes.
And were changes made to the plan to address that concern?
Yes, the doors were removed. The current attic plan shows that there will be HVAC units up in that space, in the attic. It's predominantly a very small crawl space. I visited the site earlier before the meeting and saw that it's a steep slope, narrow roof, so it doesn't lend itself to living space. Probably very nice storage, but not living space.
Now, there was, I don't know if on the board's copy, if the mechanicals are outlined in red, in mine, they, I have a red dotted line to show me where the mechanicals run inside of that area. I don't know if they, if you have that in red, or if you only have that in the, there's a dotted line there that shows that there are going to be mechanicals on the floor. I want you to direct, give attention to that. Mr. Severino, can you show the way the mechanicals are going to go?
Yes, the mechanicals on any plan here are schematic, the ductwork is going to run as a mechanical contractor lays them out, but predominantly, it just shows that there will be HVAC units, ductwork up in the eaves of that attic. So predominantly, mechanical space and storage is how it's shown.
And that's going to reduce any living area also, right?
There's not much there to be spoken of, but yes.
And that, we also put a note on the, on A2 that shows that the attic is only accessible from the second floor, you see that box there?
Yes.
Can you point that to the board's attention?
It's right there below the box.
Thank you. Now, there's nothing else on A2. I would direct you to A3, please. Now, there are three diagrams that are on A3. I would direct your attention to the upper left-hand proposed rear elevation piece. And you see a calculation at the top of that that shows that it looks like it's about maybe a five-foot, 10-inch width at the seven-foot clearance, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's why you're saying that there's very little livable space, it's only going to be five feet wide essentially at that height?
Yes, that would be the only real seven-foot space that's up there.
And then the rest is sloping down to quickly eliminate any other livable space?
Yes, and that slopes down at a slope of 912, which is pretty, pretty steep, as far as the roof is.
And I guess the other changes that you show on A3 are the removal of the dormer?
The other changes are the removal of the dormers, as indicated by the bubbles that are on the other two elevations.
Are there any other changes that you needed to point out to this board?
Well, I believe that covers the scope of the changes that were made for this meeting.
And in your review of the transcript, were there any changes that were requested that were not addressed?
I believe that this covered everything that was listed or discussed in the transcript, I believe.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Severino.
So, the intent of the, that spaces is to be able to back up and pull out frontwards on those two?
Yes, that small backup space is shown over to the left-hand side of the site, so that each car, predominantly number one and number two, would be able to back into that space and go out frontwards.
It is, I don't, we have, what is that backup space, do you know?
Looks to be approximately, and I can say this just by visual, it looks to be approximately 45 feet in depth there, just enough to get the back tires a little further back towards the, without hitting the curb.
Do you understand what he's talking about? That little, that little cutout there? He's saying that cutout is the backup space.
What page do you have?
One more, okay. That little, that little... That's the backup space.
That little cutout.
Yeah, so it comes down?
Yeah.
That's the backup.
Now, keep in mind with this, you still have 24 feet behind the cars, and that's just additional, you know...
This one?
Turn this way. Yes.
Are we clear?
Yeah, well, it says backup space.
There you go.
Okay. That is tight, especially with the number one.
Well, I don't, I don't know, like he said, it still is 24 feet.
Yeah, behind it.
Any other questions by members of the board? Any questions by, is that the end of his testimony?
Yes.
Okay, any questions by members of the public of this witness? None? Do you have another, another witness?
The purpose of adjourning this and coming back was only to present the revisions and to show that we were responsible to the board's concerns.
Does any member of the public wish to give testimonies on this application? None? Okay, then you wish to sum up?
Yes, I do, I would ask if you had any other questions of my own, or, both of the owners are here. You heard from Sales last time, but you also have the other two...
There's six members to hear this case.
Understood. That was acknowledged, then, accepted.
Oh, I, yeah, I know, at the beginning.
Any of the members have any questions, any of the previous witnesses from a month ago? None? Okay.
Well, in summation, I think...
Uh, I don't, I don't think anybody from the public has any question for the previous witnesses from a month ago either that were here anyway. Okay, then you can sum up, yes.
Summation is, is simple, you, the, we, even through the discourse, we know what this is. It's a single-family home, we're asking for it to be D1 use variance to allow a two-family and also the, the C for removal of the garage. Um, I think it's a viable project that will remove a blight in that neighborhood. I think that the impact is, we heard testimony and I'm summing up what you already heard with, with regard to the positive and negative criteria as well as the, um, the, the, the standards that need to be applied. And I think that this project would then fit that neighborhood, I think it's necessary for that neighborhood. And I, I, my understanding is more than five years that that property has been dilapidated and causing a blight on that neighborhood. And I do understand your concern that you may be, um, I don't know if we can say that we're setting a precedent. When we do, when we look in that corner of that, those, those, those two corners, um, we're not necessarily, we're not necessarily setting a precedent that doesn't exist in, within that, that little localized area. I agree that in other single-family homes, in, uh, residence or areas, it is much more difficult to impose a two-family house. But, um, this is a project that needs to happen in that particular area. That pro, that house needs this, this, this type of remediation and this is what makes that a viable move in order to be able to do that. Now, I would also then say in summation that I, I, I don't, I don't think that, um, I think that the plans have been thoughtful. The plans have been, have been very careful and considerate of the existing character of the neighborhood. Um, I went to that house and I see that the front is going to remain the same. This is not gonna be two doors or two mailboxes. Um, there's, there only, and, and all the improvements are to the rear of the property. And the property can accommodate that because that's a very, very large and deep lot. Um, and with the removal of the garage, actually, I think it's even gonna feel like a bigger lot in that regard. Um, I think that that, and, and also moving the parking was, I think, actually a really good idea because you don't see the cars lined up in that driveway. Now they're in the back, the landscaping has also been offered for the plans. Um, you have the plans to rely on with regard to the, um, to the changes to the attic so that you know that it's gonna be built in a particular fashion that's going to discourage anyone from staying up in that attic. Um, and I, I think that this application, I'm going to ask you please to, um, consider it and approve this application.
Uh, Mr. Giannano will not be participating because he didn't participate in the first part, so he's the odd person on. Members, we've got six members that are left. Your pleasure.
What condition?
Whatever, you gotta tell me the condition. Well, are we at that stage yet or...
Well, we're in discussion. Whether he wants to make a motion, I think, I'm asking that the members of, if there's any discussion that they wanna have.
No motion.
I, I think first, I like to roll down a check last time. So, I think the first thing we need to do out of respect is that I appreciate them coming back and listening to what our concerns were and trying to remediate that. So, I don't want that to be lost, you know, and that, that, that shows their respect for the board and I appreciate that. So, you know what? Did they resolve some of the party issue? I'd say a good attempt, yes. Uh, the attic, absolutely they resolved it. But then I think from the last meeting, what our primary questions were, and I, I'll be honest, I don't know, where is, he did a very good presentation, but it kinda solidified what how I felt. His presentation was great, but at the end of the day, whether there's 10 or so other structures in that proximity, it doesn't negate that it is a predominantly one-family zone. That's for me. And so I can make his argument beforehand, which I won't, but anyway, it says, wh- where do you start and stop that thought process? I'm thinking, you know, as a homeowner, me, I live in a mixed neighborhood, but I, do I wish it was all one-family? Yeah, I do, but it's not the case. Was it predominantly probably one-family way before me? Yes, and this is one of those applications I call creep. I think this might be the beginning of creep in that particular neighborhood.
Not with other people coming afterwards.
I, I, yeah, so, and I, and I, no disrespect to the owners, uh, I don't give any consideration, uh, what risk, uh, you know, that's, you know, I hope they got a great price. Well, I, I don't, I don't negate that, I want that, you know? I want the, the price to reflect the condition and things of that nature. I, 'cause I want someone to come in, to your point, to me, to fit, sit up. I think it could be a beautiful one-family as well. So, that's my particular position. I'm not leaning towards, you know, uh, in favor of making it a two-family because it is a predominantly one-family zone. And I think where do you stop the creep? And we've done, we've had this before, as Mr. Sheldon alluded to, and we were much tougher on, on that particular applicant. Not that it makes any relevance to me, but I do every case, my case-by-case basis. So, I don't particularly see that, uh, for this app, location. That's just my opinion, I welcome my colleagues' feedback.
Anyone else?
I would like to concur with, uh, Mr. Valano. I, I, I think that this could still be a very vi- viable one-family home. It, it needs some work, but the, as the applicant said, they're, they're preserving the front of the building. It's not like they're, they're intending to, to change, you know, it's, there's almost, um, a, a, a conflict here where they're, they're saying that the house needs all this work, but yet they're preserving the streetscape. Uh, they're, they wanna maintain, they, they, they wanna maintain the, the front facade of the building, so they, and they're just saying, we wanna, we need to preserve, preserve the characteristic, but allow us to stick, uh, 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 another structure in the back of the building so that we can make more money in the process of turning this into a two-family. I just don't, I don't get by the argument that a two-family is warranted here. I think that we, we, we have an obligation to try to maintain the integrity of, of this part of Belville. And the records indicate this is a overwhelmingly one-family zone. And I, I also agree with Willie that, uh, we allow a two-family go from here and, and, for lack of a better term, the creeping process will, will unfold.
Everybody else wish to say anything? This is left up to me. Biggest argument we had last Monday, sticking point, I think, that started this, besides the attic, beside the parking. The biggest issue was what was the actual, uh, properties within the 100-foot radius? And what came out tonight was something that was even surprising. Because even though it was testified, there is 10 two-families in the 100-foot radius.
Two hundred.
Huh? 200 foot, I'm sorry, 200-foot radius. What surprised me the most is that there's only one two-family on either side of the wood itself, and it's probably more. And it's so far away, I mean, it's, I don't know how many houses it is down the street, but it's definitely down the street, on the same side, but down the street. And then when I looked into it with all the, uh, the evidence that was given, I, I think I testified, well, not testified, but it's in the record that that property was built in 1914 before there was any zoning laws. So, anything went back then. Technically, I feel we have to preserve the zone. And since it's one-family on all but one house, on both sides of that street...
On the wood.
On the wood, I'm saying on the wood. Specifically the wood, on both sides of that street for the length of the blocks. I can't go along with this, I'm sorry. I wanna protect the integrity of the zone. So, anybody else have anything to say, other than I said my part?
So, I guess you point that I made at the last minute has to reach the lot size. It's, it's genuine and you don't find a lot size like that in our town. And with all of these ideas to build larger buildings, um, I just kinda feel like this is a, a great home to raise a family and, and have a nice deep lot to be able to do that, 'cause people move away to get that. And that's like your next step, you know? If you're renting an apartment in town and you wanna see a nice home where you can move into and let yourself down.
But if, if you see what Mr. Valano said, if you go down that block, all those lots are that deep. So, is this gonna continue, go from one house to the next house to the next house? That's where he's coming from. And technically, I feel a one-family zone protect the, the integrity of it should be kept. But, um, I don't know, I'm never supposed to make a mo, I'm, I'm not supposed to make a motion unless it's absolutely necessary, but anybody wanna make a motion either way?
I'm gonna make the motion to deny the, the two-family.
Okay, leave it as a one?
Leave it as a one, yes.
Okay, do I get a second? You'll second, okay, so motion made, uh, by Mr. Sheldon, seconded by Ms. Bennett.
And a yes is to deny.
A yes is to deny and no is not to deny. Okay, clerk call a roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Carusa?
Yes.
Giannato?
Oh, sorry.
Pepelema?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Valano?
Yes.
Yes. Denied technically, uh, six to nothing.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation.
You did a great job.
Oh, you go to school? Are you, are you a student?
I still am.
Oh, great. Yes, all right, well, we'll have a recess, five minutes, I don't have time for anyone. We'll have a recess for five minutes. Zoning Board of September 5th, 2019 of the township of Belville is now back in session. Uh, the last case on our agenda tonight is ZB 2008, applicant is seeking approval to legalize an existing one-bedroom apartment with a multifamily apartment building with a to, for a total of nine apartment units. Correct?
Correction.
Correct. Now, before we get started, Mr. DiLorenzo, the question came up, based upon your denial notice, has anything changed with the new law?
They got, they got less, they still got a D1 variance and they got less bulk variance.
We still got the D1.
Still got the D1, but less the bulk variance like the previously.
I think it's a D...
Yeah, but with bulk variance is eliminated.
Yeah, it's a D5, it goes from... An A1 use, a pure use to an A5 density? So, it's A5 density?
It's an A5 density.
Density?
D5.
D5.
D5 on A5. D5 and then...
It's still a multifamily zone.
Yes.
Okay. Now, does any keep change with the bulk?
A few big changes.
I'm looking at Tom's, uh, June 6th, the letter report.
Well, that was before they changed the law.
Yeah.
What's no more?
It's a townhouse zone, I believe.
Yeah, it's a townhouse zone, so he's, he's short some, uh...
A townhouse zone?
Well, there's three different...
This is similar to the one we had up in, uh, in Silver Lake?
It's Steve.
This one, but I thought they had townhouse, I don't know if this had townhouse.
This has become a townhouse zone, I believe. Check for a...
It's, it's, it could be a triplex or a townhouse, but you go for the townhouse because it's more, more yards. But he, he, he's only, lot area is okay, so he's got like a front yard, parking thing that's exist, existing and he's got a, uh, parking stalls that are, are short and also I think the aprons are a little bit too, too, uh, long.
So, what's, what's the...
Pre-existing.
Of the bulk?
That was just it.
What?
The driveway, uh, the aprons too, too, uh...
Too wide.
Too wide, and the, uh, parking stalls and the front yard.
So, driveway is, is eliminated, that part? The, that's the bottom one, is it eliminated or, or the issue?
No, the driveway, the driveway.
Here's the variance.
Front yard parking.
You got front yard parking, rear yard deficiency, parking stall size with the driveway cut and whether Frank decides this or not, I don't know. The question would be rooftop terraced is not there. Well, that's a new thing now?
That's a new thing.
That'd be for a mixed use.
Is that right?
That would, that would be for a mixed use.
Okay. The driveway, parking stalls, parking in the front yard and rear yard.
All right, so now...
They're all pre-existing.
All right, let's, let's go all pre-existing, I'm gonna get things out of the way. Let's go down the list. Lot area, is that an issue anymore?
No.
So, the 7,500's out. Lot width, is that an issue anymore?
No.
No. So, this is a no, this is a no. Minimums, front yard?
No.
No issue. Uh, minimum side yard?
There's only four variances.
Just, it's not an issue?
No, no, the four that Bob said, that's what I said.
The front yard parking, the rear yard deficiency.
I'm gonna go through the list. Rear yard?
Yes.
Rear yard is a yes.
That's a variance.
That's a variance. Okay, the next one, maximum lot coverage?
No.
No. Okay, maximum concurvous coverage?
No.
No. Okay, parking spaces?
Parking spaces, number is not variance.
No variance now.
No variance for, for 18 spaces required?
No.
Oh, yeah, you only need one.
Well, if you're doing the density, I go along, isn't that...
One per bedroom.
We only need, uh, 11 spaces.
11, all right, so we're down to 11 spaces. So, you have 14, 14 proposed, so that means it, it complies.
Excess of three spaces, are you...
Excess, okay, complies. So, that complies. Parking in the front yard?
That's a variance.
Yes, variance.
That's pre-existing.
Okay, parking stalls nine feet by 19? That's a variance?
Yes.
Now, what about the driveway?
The apron's too, too, uh...
Narrow?
Too wide.
Too wide, I believe.
Too wide?
Yeah, wide.
Now, are all these pre-existing?
Yes.
So, nothing is gonna be aggravated or made worse? Well, I'm gonna answer your question, if it's 20 feet required, doesn't that mean you have to be at least 20 feet?
It's the maximum.
Oh, it's the maximum? Okay, so that needs a variance too then? It's there, I don't understand.
That's one of the four bulk variances.
Okay. And technically, only two were allowed under the old law and you're proposing nine?
I'm sorry?
It's a density. You're still using a D5, correct?
It's not a density, it's a use.
It's a use.
No density.
Well, you get a D.
It's a D.
It's a D5 with just density.
I'm asking you now what's going on, you're not being confused.
Really, I just answered all your questions.
Not when it came to density.
Really, it's a expansion of pre-existing non-conforming use, density's not an issue anymore.
It's a D2.
So, are we...
It's a D2 now.
It's a D2 now? So, you're gonna use a D2 over the D5?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I think it is.
I'm just asking.
That's what I think it is.
Yeah, you're expanding the use.
I mean, it's a non-conforming...
Nine.
Eight and nine, so that, that gets to the D, so for the use.
So, it's a D2, non-expansion of a non-conforming use? And the eight units, was that there by variance or was that there as a non-conform, a true non-conforming?
That was there as a true non-conforming, I believe. Back from 1970, I'm pretty sure it was built as an existing eight unit.
Yeah, that's what's in the, uh, in the denial log.
Where's the ninth one coming from?
The ninth was put in illegally at some point 25 years ago.
Or is this a D2?
Uh, bottom left, as you look at the picture, Will? Bottom left.
Gotcha.
Not, and not in addition to the building, just whatever, whatever happened, I have no... Yeah, that's what it was.
It was probably a super.
No idea.
Right, so you have three ex, three excess parking spaces and four variances, all of which exist already?
All pre-existing. And it's, it's very, I, I sent a long letter into Gina stating my position, actually, Michael sent the letter and stating the position, that obviously, uh, we are proceeding under the old law and the new law in view of the fact that we have the time of application to protect us and we have the right to proceed under the new law where... and we have the right to proceed under the new law where it benefits us.
Gina, we have care with notice and?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, the first one we heard was density?
Originally, it was density. Now?
No, no, we're talking about the first case.
I'm sorry.
Because this is very conflicting change in the law.
I understand.
In the middle of cases.
Poor Frank is really.
I know.
Imagine.
I know, I feel for Frank. I feel for myself, though.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council's name is Robert Gassiel, this room is Gassiel from Laco 524, Union Avenue, Belleville. Most everything about this, which I would have opened about, was in the colloquy of reviewing where we are. I want to point out, I sent an extensive letter in, uh, probably three weeks ago, setting forth my legal position. I've discussed it with council. It allows us to proceed because of time of decision on what was beneficial to us at the time of decision, and we can proceed and under what the changes are that are beneficial to us too. And in the letter I sent in, I cite the case, and I won't waste everybody's time, but it's Jai-Sai-Ram. It's a Thomas River case, obviously, it's a fairly recent case because of the time of decision law was only changed in 2010. The witnesses you'll hear from are just two tonight. Mr. Wilhowsky of Castle Apartments, INC., the applicant, and Paul Sionis, the architect and planner. Mr. Wilhowsky will review the history of the property and discuss the number of units and the parking circumstances which are no longer various. The architect slash planner will describe the building and the unit in question. He'll review the positive and negative criteria with regard to the D2, and he'll discuss the bulk variances, all of which are pre-existing. I'd like to call Mr. Wilhowsky as my first witness.
Sir, could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Timothy Wilhowsky, W-I-L-H-O-V-S-K-Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilhowsky, what is your occupation?
Real estate broker.
And what is your business stress?
38 Washington Avenue, Belleville, New Jersey.
And are you the managing agent of Castle Apartments, INC.?
Yes, I am.
And is your wife the president of that entity?
Yes.
Does Castle own 19 Van Rensselaer?
Yes.
For approximately how long has it owned that property?
Since the mid, early 1970s.
And is that being used as nine units at the present time?
No, we took, emptied the one unit extra from the letter from the town about over a year ago now.
So it was used as nine units for an extended period of time, but Frank DiLorenzo, the zoning officer, indicated there was a violation and you terminated using that unit, is that correct?
Right, it was used for about 20, 25 years.
And how did you and your wife wind up with this property?
We inherited that property.
And as you indicated previously, it's been in her family since the early 70s?
Yes.
So therefore, it was probably built by your father-in-law, is that correct?
Yes, or a partner, yes.
And how many rooms are, how many units are there in the building that are operating right now?
Eight units.
And of those eight units, how many are ones?
Six.
And how many are twos?
Two.
And the ninth unit, what is that?
One bedroom.
And is this registered as a nine unit with the Department of Community Affairs since at least the early 2000s?
Yes.
Is it registered with the Belleville rent control since the 2000s as a nine unit?
Yes.
Obviously, the parking complies, but have you ever had any problem with parking spaces with any of the tenants? And every tenant gets assigned space?
Yes.
I really have no further questions as witness, Mr. Chairman.
Questions by members of the board?
Just in the interest of being fair, what's your tax bill say?
Tax bill says eight.
Which I, which is not, which is hard to understand when you've got registered as a nine, multiple housing, I can show you all the certificates.
Well, you know, from our experience working each other, tax don't talk to code, code don't talk to tax.
Oh, I understand, but with tax records, with the rental records.
I know, and I, one doesn't talk to the other, but as an owner, and I'm sure that I am, I know what my tax bill says.
Well, and again, it's not being used as a nine right now, hasn't been used as a nine for 20 years. But it was used for 25 years as a nine. What?
Yeah, and so, from that perspective.
So Frankie, how did we discover this one?
I think you got a rental to.
Oh, you got a C.O. Well, that's because before the 90s, there was no C.O.s.
Well, this is a rental C.O., not a reset.
Not a resale.
So again, my client had it registered as a nine with the record.
When did they start rental C.O.s?
Oh, I started a while ago.
Before the 90s?
No.
Oh, so it was after the 90s, and that's why it's in the middle of getting caught.
I didn't get into the labor.
No.
Just, I want to be consistent.
I don't understand, I, I asked my client, I don't understand.
Now, is he familiar with the plans? Can I ask him questions about the plans?
I'd rather you ask the architect, if that's okay.
Well, here's why I want to ask him the plans.
Ask him, you're the chairman.
Okay, I'm being a pain in the neck, but on the second page of these plans, on the second page of these plans, I see existing and I see proposed. I assume this is for the same unit?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question, architect can't give me an answer for that. Only he can tell me it's the same one, he's just changing it. Okay, alright, you want to, anybody else have questions? None.
Mr. Sios.
Could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony, show me the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name, please, and spell your last name?
My name is Paul Sionis, spelled S-L-A-N-S-M-I-O-N-A-S.
Thank you.
Mr. Sios, would you review your qualifications as an architect and planner?
Sure, I'm a licensed architect, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Been licensed as an architect since 1982, and as a licensed professional planner since 1985.
Mr. Chairman, I submit that Mr. Sios is qualified in the field of architecture and planning.
As long as, as long as his license is just.
My license is a permanent.
You have one of those piggyback licenses? Planner, I mean, a planner because you're an architect?
Yes, for the planner.
That's what I call a piggyback license, okay.
Mr. Sios, just for the benefit of the board, for anybody that's ridden up Bluefield Ave in Caldwell, did you recently, did we recently work together on two buildings in Caldwell?
We did.
And those are two bank buildings that are in process of being converted?
Yes.
If anybody has driven Bluefield Ave in Caldwell. Would you describe the site, Mr. Sios?
Sure, I'd like to pass out an exhibit. It's marked an 8-2.
Oh, you would.
8-1 was the most. Sir?
We'll avoid the chairman for sure.
Mr. Sios, what can we call 8-2?
What is it?
8-2 is a, um...
Colorize something.
Colorize a version of a, of the presentation. It has all of the drawings that were submitted, except these are colored for better visibility.
Okay.
In addition to photographs. We, five or six years ago, we stopped bringing Home Court meetings and doing PowerPoint where these handouts. You can't see the PowerPoint, you can't see the Home Court. So I'll describe the site, the site is 19 Van Rensselaer Street. It's a 75 foot by 100 foot lot located on the south side of Van Rensselaer Street. It's a .17 acre lot, has a slight slope from the south side to the rear, to the north side of the front. And the lot's currently improved with an asphalt paved parking lot and an existing three-story masonry building, paving striped for 14 parking spaces right now. There's also an existing chain link fence along the south edge of the parking lot. There's a concrete block wall and wood-stopped paved fence along the easterly side of the parking lot. And the asphalt paving is on the east and the north side of the property.
Would you describe the existing structure on the site?
Sure, if you look at page two on this handout, it's a photograph taken, taken by my office in July of 2018. So the building, as you can see, is located in that southeast corner of the property. It's a three-story building with brick exterior, has a mansard style roof with asphalt channeled on all of the slope sides of the roof. And then according to township records, it was constructed around 1971. Building currently contains eight occupied dwelling units and then one vacant space on the ground floor.
And would you review briefly the areas surrounding this building?
Yes, if you turn to page three, page three is a photograph from Bing Maps. It's a bird's eye view of the area. It shows the subject property highlighted, colored in orange colored lines. So the, as you can see, 19 Van Rensselaer Street's on the south side of the street. It's the sixth block to the west of Washington Avenue, and it's the ninth block to the east of Dow Street. The property's surrounded by a variety of residential uses, primarily wood-framed one and two-family houses on the street. According to township records, and I looked at the tax records, many of the wood-framed houses on the street were constructed in the 1890s, with the exception of the last three at the corner of Dow Street and Van Rensselaer, which are all built in 1931. Several of the properties, but not all of them, have driveways for off-street parking. Two other buildings on this street were built around the same time as 19 Van Rensselaer. One building, 10 Van Rensselaer on the opposite side of the street, was built at the same time as the same brick on the exterior. And then there's 11 Van Rensselaer, it's another newer building on the street, and the tax records show that that was built around 1973. Washington Avenue directed to the east is developed with commercial properties. There's a one-story osteopath office with a parking lot at the southwest corner of Van Rensselaer Street in Washington. Then there's a one-story retail restaurant building at the northwest corner of Washington and Van Rensselaer. I looked at the street signs and according to the street signs, there's no limit on parking on the street except for Wednesdays between 12:30 PM and 4:00 PM. So no parking allowed on the street on Wednesdays between 12:30 and 4:00 PM.
You've already described the exterior of the building, anything further with regard to that?
It's just interesting, the building is actually turned sideways on the lot. If you look at the photograph on page four, top photograph, there are no windows that face the street. The building is turned sideways, all of the windows face both to the east and to the west. No windows on the, on the street, the solid brick wall. The two main entrances, entrances into the building, as shown on the photographs, both face the parking lot facing, facing to the east. So residents enter either one of those two entry doors to access a common hallway that leads up to their apartments. All of the windows face the sides of the building, so all the windows are on the, both the east side and the west side of the building.
Would you describe the dwelling units within briefly?
Sure, on page five is an enlarged floor plan of the subject dwelling that we're talking about. Currently, there's eight occupied dwelling units within the building. Six of them are one-bedroom units, two of them are two-bedroom units. And the unit sizes range anywhere from 900 square feet up to 1,000 square feet. So a ninth unit, which is the subject of this application, is currently vacant. And I've learned from the applicant that originally this was either storage space, a super's apartment, or a two-car garage. But later, approximately 20 to 25 years ago, according to the applicant, it was converted into a one-bedroom dwelling unit. Belleville Township Code Enforcement informed the applicant that ninth unit was never approved and ordered the units to be vacated, so the applicant complied, made the unit vacant. And he's now filed this application, which is before you tonight to legalize, to request to legalize the ninth dwelling unit, while also proposing upgrades to make the unit nicer and bring it more into current building codes.
And the, the whole building, including this unit, are approved by the Multiple Housing Inspection Division?
Correct.
Would you review the zoning?
Sure, page six is an enlargement of the zoning map, the newest zoning map as of July 2019. So, as you know, several changes were made to the zoning ordinance since the application was filed in March and the application was being completed. So as of July 2019, the property is now in the RC Townhouse Zone. Prior to that, the property was in the RC Multifamily Zone. We were originally scheduled to appear at the July 10th meeting, at that meeting was suggested we carry the case since the ordinance was being changed and many of the things would directly affect this case. Mr. Gassiel described the letter that was forwarded to the zoning officer. Basically, several conditions are existing, existing non-conforming conditions that have probably existed since the building was constructed in 1971. And that includes the rear yard setback, so existing rear yard setback is non-conforming. Front yard parking is parking between the building and the front property line. Parking space size and setback from property, from the property line. All of the parking stalls are under, less than the nine by 19 that's required by Belleville. And they're also three feet from the easterly property line, and it's required to be five feet. And then additionally, it's the width of the driveway, driveway curb cut, it's to be a maximum of 20 feet, and this curb cut is an existing 30 feet. So those are all existing non-conforming conditions.
And would you review any aspect of the master plan that you think is relevant to this application?
Sure, I reviewed the 2009 Belleville Master Plan, and I also looked at the 20, the January 2019 reexamination report, and the master plan set a lot of goals for the township of Belleville to guide future development. And this application meets with several of those goals. And the first one was to continue with, to encourage a wide variety of housing types at a range of rental levels, so that all types of families and all income groups could be housed in Belleville. Well, this application has a range, it has a range of one and two-bedroom units, all pretty good size. They're, like I said, 900 to 1,000 square feet. The, um, it recommended that the township encourage new housing that meets modern market standards in terms of size, design, and amenities. Well, we're redesigning this ninth dwelling unit to be more typical of new dwelling units in multifamily buildings. We've worked on a lot of new five, six-story apartment buildings, and it seems like everybody wants, in the last five to 10 years, everyone's an open kitchen dining living room concept that meets modern market standards, and that's what we've designed for this space. You know, it has a good bathroom, great closet space, really nice kitchen. Also, the master plan recommended that the RC Multifamily District be modified to eliminate new garden apartments as a permitted use within the zone. So this was done in the newly adopted ordinance, so new garden apartment buildings are no longer allowed within this zone. It also suggested, the master plan suggested, that parking requirements be reduced for residential units to be more reflective of actual parking practice of multifamily rental housing within the region. And the thinking is that not everyone has a car, not everyone drives, not every apartment requires two cars. So therefore, Belleville and the new zoning ordinance changed the requirement to be one per bedroom rather than two per unit. So this application complies with the master plan goals.
Would you review, you've gone over all the variances, can you review the criteria with regard to the D2 and the bulk variances?
Sure. Well, as we said, we're requesting a D2 variance for an expansion of the non-conforming use, and also the C bulk variances that are pretty much existing variances. So the, for the D2 variance, you can grant a D2 variance without, providing that it could be granted without substantial impairment of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, and that the benefits of the variance would substantially outweigh any detriment to the purposes of zoning regulation, that the proposed use would promote any of the purposes of zoning. that the proposed use would promote any of the purposes of zoning. So this application does promote several special reasons, which are the purposes of zoning. Uh, first one is that, um, um, it encourages municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. So, so that could be argued in that the dwelling unit will be improved and modernized with a much better layout, typical of today's new, modern apartment buildings, it'll have a new kitchen, new bathroom, new open living dining kitchen area, kitchen area, all with ample closet space, so this would be an attractive, modern dwelling. Uh, the second special reason is that, um, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters. So this, this dwelling unit, by redoing it, it will be, it will be brought up to current building code standards, making it safer than it's ever been. So the windows that were installed in nineteen seventy-one, for example, don't meet Egress code requirements. So the, the building code requirement is everybody has to be able to climb out of a, a bedroom window, uh, either on their own or be escorted by a fire, a firefighter. Uh, so we're calling for replacing the existing windows in this unit with Egress windows that will allow someone to safely climb out of the building or to be pulled out of it in case of a fire. They'll look exactly like the double-hung windows that are there, but they'll be casing it with a horizontal bar to look like a double-hung. Also, um, we're upgrading the electric, uh, in the, in this unit. There'll be new electrical outlets, lights, and switches, all to be brought up to current codes. Then the other special reason is that we're providing adequate light air and open space. So this is a good-sized nine-hundred-and-ten square foot, one-bedroom unit. It's not, not an undersized dwelling unit that, that, that the applicant's trying to squeeze into a small space. Nine-hundred-and-ten is a nice-sized, uh, one-bedroom unit. Um, also promoting the general welfare, so the, uh, proposed uses of this ninth unit is peculiarly fitted to the particular location for which the variance is sought. Um, the use of the space as a dwelling unit within this building is a good fit. As I stated, it's not undersized, it's nine-hundred-and-ten square feet. Um, proposing improvements to bring it up to modern market standards is recommended by the master plan. It'll be nicer than it ever was, with the new kitchen, new bathroom, closet space, and the open floor plan that people are looking for. And then also the applicant's providing off-street parking on a street where not all of the dwellings have off-street parking, have, uh, have off-street parking. So, so it does promote the general welfare.
And the bulk variances, briefly?
So as, as to the bulk variances, as I said, it's for parking, existing conditions, so parking stall size, front yard parking, setback deficiencies. Uh, so the, the bulk variances could be argued both on the C-one grounds and the C-two grounds. So under the C-one grounds, the variance could be granted, I'm sorry, I'm going too fast. See, um, such a few. Uh, under the section C-one, a variance could be granted because of the narrowness, shallowness, shape, or topographic condition of the property or the building lawfully constructed thereon. So in other words, due to the size of this lot and the lawfully existing building on the lot, there's no room to increase the size of the parking spaces or move them further away from the lot lines. And then as to the C-two grounds, um, we look at the purposes of the municipal land use or how it would be advanced by a deviation from the ordinance requirements and how the benefits outweigh any detriment to the public good. So the grant of a C-two variance must benefit the community. So it's reasonable for the township to support these smaller parking spaces and that, and it, it enables the applicant to provide the required number of parking spaces plus three extra. Uh, based on the current zoning, he's required to have, um, eleven parking spaces. He has fourteen parking spaces on site. Uh, the benefits of the deviation outweigh the detriment of parking automobiles on the street. So in light of the fact that many of the older homes on the street don't even have driveways, um, is a benefit to allowing this applicant to maintain those fourteen parking stalls with slightly smaller spaces that are two feet closer to the property line, uh, than they're, um, than they're, than they're allowed to be. And then seeing, since each of these parking spaces is assigned, uh, so the applicant has indicated to me that each of these parking spaces is assigned to individual tenants. So since those are assigned spaces and not random, where people have to come and park in a different space every day, tenants get used to the smaller spaces.
Anything further you would like to review or cover?
Well, just the negative criteria, I guess. So my opinion, the variances could be, can be granted without substantial impairment of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. So the, the benefits of the variance would substantially outweigh any detriment to the purposes of the zoning regulation. And, um, as, as the applicant testified, the ninth unit existed about, for about twenty-five years, uh, without having a negative impact on the neighborhood and presumably not impairing the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. Um, however, now with the proposed improvements, it'll be brought up to current building codes, making it safer and, and more attractive. And as I stated, um, as, as far as the parking and the parking stall location variances, these are all assigned spaces. The tenants will all know that the spaces are slightly undersized and, and they're used to parking in these spaces. The spaces may be undersized and closer to the lot line than allowed, but the lot serves to provide off-street parking for up to fourteen vehicles that would otherwise have to park on the street. Eliminating the need for on-street parking is, is a, is a major benefit that outweighs the unders, uh, the detriment of the undersized parking spaces.
And the zoning ordinance in Belleville has been changed to reflect that there is no density requirement in residential zones at present time, is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Anything further?
No. Oh, well, the trash recycling, we should just describe it. So, um, the zoning officer requested, um, at the time of the application that the trash and recycling be, uh, made, uh, in a organized fashion on the property and enclosed. Uh, so if you look on page eight of, of the handout, um, it showed examples of trash enclosures. Uh, most towns are requiring trash, trash and recycling enclosures. Less and less wood fences or chain link fences, but more, uh, either masonry or, or metal enclosures. Uh, so the proposal is to, um, uh, create an enclosed trash and recycling area in front of the parking stalls ten and eleven. The rear of the parking enclosure is an existing six-foot-high concrete block wall. Uh, but we're proposing the front of it to be a six-foot-high, uh, corrugated metal enclosure with two gates that will allow for up to, um, uh, six trash cans and three recycling cans to fit within, within the enclosure. Uh, the applicant stated to me, based on the history of managing the building, that, uh, nine trash and recycling cans are, are sufficient for this building. And he also indicated that each of the tenants, uh, carries their trash and recycling out, out to this, uh, trash area.
And does he have an employee that takes care of taking your trash out on garbage day?
I, I have been told that that is the case, yes.
No further questions, this witness, and I have no further questions.
Any questions by members of the board?
Uh, I have a couple, uh, in regard to the trash enclosure, th- this isn't a dumpster, these are just regular trash cans that get, will, will dust. You don't need a, a truck access.
Correct.
With that airwork. The property to the left, uh, the house that's situated to the left, the cars are facing that home. Is there, I, I can't tell from the Bing map, is there a fence there to shield that wall?
If you look on page two, it shows there's a, an existing concrete block wall.
Alright, alright.
That's, that's just above the height of the headlights.
It's alright, it's just, sorry, okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, in, in regard to page three, again, the Bing maps, uh, it looks like the, the house to the right, have, have they, um, allowed their, their trees to get overgrown in the back? It looks like the trees are, are, are right up against your building.
Do we have the applicant here who had a question?
Uh, that house was abandoned for about five years and that's just being renovated now.
Okay, alright. So those trees will be cut, trimmed properly or?
I'll see what, what we can do and I'll talk to the owner next door to answer this.
So I, I think you, your, your windows for your building are, because you're sideways, they're front and back, so you're, those, those, according to this map, it looks like those tree branches are probably right up against your windows.
Anyone else have a question?
Five, well, oh, sorry, just one last, one last thing. Uh, you mentioned that, uh, you're going to be replacing windows, uh, to have proper egress. Is, is, is the window replacement just for this unit or you're doing the whole building?
No, this, this unit of windows, if you look on page four, the windows are small, slightly smaller than the windows on the second floor above. So it, it would be these windows on the first floor.
Just for the first floor.
To comply with the code.
Okay.
Who could change it? Why?
Alright, thank you, thank you.
I have a question. Uh, I think it's great you're changing the windows. Um, there's one existing cutout for an air conditioner for the master bedroom. So one of those new windows, somebody's gonna want to stick an air conditioner in it. Don't you think it'd be a good idea to cut an opening?
Yes.
For a second air conditioner in the living room area?
In the wall, yes.
Yeah.
I agree.
Anyone else? I have a couple of questions. You are an architect, correct? Have you made these plans?
Yes.
At one time. Well, two, let's go to, first thing first, the garbage area, there's gonna be a car parked in front of there. Is that gonna cause a problem? Cause I think that's parking space number eleven.
Right, so at the time of, of, of the collection, I believe that you would not have a car in space number eleven.
That would not be a problem. Well, do we even have to have a car in space number eleven? Can we make this, since we're over, can we make this only, only thirteen spaces?
Not a problem, we don't have an issue with your request.
And under the old law, for eight units, you would have needed sixteen parking spaces. Are you familiar when the building was built?
I think it said nineteen seventy-one.
No, but did his family own it then?
I think they were.
Shortly after being built. Okay. Now, let me ask you a question, and, and this is also the architect. And be very truthful with me, but it's not gonna have a bad effect. But where these, where this apartment was, was this a two-car garage?
It probably was. That, that predates me, but it probably was.
And then the bricks were added in and closed up? Cause I can see there's a difference in the bricks, I can even see the lines in this picture. I'm very good at this, Mr. Gassillon.
I, I didn't know that, nor did I remember it either.
I also noticed on the plans, the walls are very thick, unusually thick.
I can think about the university.
Thick here, I'm not a steel bee, so I assume this was a two-car garage. And I know an architect can tell what was there before. If I could tell, he could tell.
This predates when I did the work, I, I did the first case, the forty-four years.
That explains how we ended up with sixteen parking space, cause you had two in the garage. And then it was eight units. So I just wanted to clear that up. So I was right, I just wanted to make sure.
Pretty good catch.
Okay, any other questions by members of the board? Okay, do you wish to sum up, Mr. Gassillon?
I'll try to be very brief, I know it's late. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I've been a nine unit for an extended period of time. The number of spaces is more than adequate, in addition to my client testifying that he's never had a problem with regard to the number of parking spaces. The, it's consistent with the master plan as, as indicated by my planner. The unit's being improved substantially, it's being brought up to code, there's gonna be a new layout, there's new windows. We're gonna put the other slot in for the other air conditioning. And this is really, as to all the bulk variances, all pre-existing non-conforming uses. We didn't change anything on this building to create any of these variances. So we got the front yard parking, the rear yard deficiency, the parking stall size, and the width of the driveway cut. We need the D-two, we need those four bulk variances, we need the site plan approval. Certainly, there's no substantial detriment. This has been used as a nine unit for twenty-five years. In addition, I think there's a concern about the quality of units by board members, and I understand that. This is a nine-hundred-and-ten square foot, one-bedroom unit, certainly generous. You can use either C-one or C-two to justify those bulk variances. I thank the board for their time and attention.
Okay, gentlemen, your pleasure.
Excuse me, can the event board see fit to approve this? Are we discussing or are we taking out that, uh, parking stall number eleven for better access?
Yes, answer me yes.
I agree. One time we agree.
Alright, that's all.
Okay, so that's a condition.
Uh, my, my, my position is the same one that we had in the previous case. It's pre-existing, I'm not happy about it, but let's get, we're gonna set it straight. It's gonna, uh, not gonna wreck, I mean, not gonna messes. There's no complaints at this particular property for twenty-five years. They don't have to like it, they're just a big one. I'm okay with it, just I don't, I don't think so.
I also agree with Willie, I, I don't see anyone here from the neighborhood that's gonna, uh, object to it.
Don't see anyone, even Mr. Fran Tantoni.
Everybody left.
He gave up after last case.
If they're, you know, neighbors were okay with it for all these years, I don't see why.
Now anybody may, uh, square away. I made my motion to approve.
Motion made to approve by Mr. Valano, uh, seconded by Mr. Giordano with the condition of the elimination of that one parking space, I believe it's number eleven.
And the air?
Yes.
And the air conditioner for the living room.
And that there be an air conditioning installed in the wall for the, uh, for the living. Well, maybe they, they want one for the bedroom, too.
I understand why they find me.
Huh? Oh, there is one. Oh, okay, okay. Alright, everybody's happy. Okay, motion made and seconded, what called the roll?
Bennett.
Yes.
Peruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Pedalino.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valano.
Yes.
Delgasha.
Yes.
Thank you for your time and attention. And thank you for staying beyond ten o'clock to finish the case, appreciate it.
Thank Willie, cause Willie likes to go. Yes, let's get back to the one.
Just one thing, for the next meeting, in the beginning of the meeting.
Let's do this memorialization.
Well, yes, because you don't want, you don't want to have one case.
Can we bring up, in the beginning of the next meeting, the last meeting, talking about electronics?
Oh, you want, you want electronics, you gotta like the parts. Yes, we have a motion, we, that everybody, a motion to be memorialized. So let's get down to it.
Resolution of memorialization, matter of deed, Pete Relenty, LLC, forty-nine, private, Washington, American. Application number two B two thousand and nineteen oh nine. Peruso.
Yes.
Pedalino.
Yes.
Valano.
Yes.
Delgasha.
Yes. Boo, yeah, we're holding out to the other one until they pay the bill.
Like I said, next meeting, we can discuss PDF format, I would appreciate it.
Yes.
I, I'm not sure, you know what PDF means yet? That's what I thought.
I guess, I mean, this is a certain type of thing on a computer.
It's not a flip phone.
It's not a flip phone.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, do I get a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion.
You made the motion, do I have a second?
No.
No second, so we can't adjourn, man.
So the favorite, aye.
Aye. Aye. We're adjourned.